I'd like to call meeting order. And roll call please, Phillips.
Counselor Belz, President. Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Sharmar.
Here.
Counselor Schinkel.
Here.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Here.
Mayor Milligan.
Here. And the consent calendar consists of the council meetings from June 5th and the council work session minutes from June 5th. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of both.
Any discussion?
I'm, Mr. Mayor, I'll have some comments regarding the content of the meeting minutes, but at a later time tonight. This is not the appropriate time.
All right. The consent calendar's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. So we're gonna move on to reports. So actually had some activities this last, actually today. American Legion Boys State is taking place on Western Oregon campus this year. And I had the chance to go speak with them this morning and share some lunch with some of the leaders of that group and it's a statewide organization. Well, it's actually a national organization, but this was a state conference for the boys. And they're all boys that have graduated, or not graduated, but finished their junior year of high school. And it's a program that helps them understand civic leadership. So they break up into cities and counties and states and do legislative actions. So it was really good to talk to them. And then I attended the Mid-Allamette Valley Council Government Board Meeting. And some of the new things that are coming forward is the COG just got licensed to be a signer for small business association loans, up to $250,000. So if there's small businesses in the area that would like to take advantage of that, feel free to get ahold of me. It's helping streamline the process for SBA loans, which has been kinda cumbersome in the past. And then one other thing that we participated in with the COG was the homeless initiative and homeless coordinator. And we got a little report on that, that it's really making a difference. And they've been able to identify some of the gaps in the services. But they've also been able to identify some of the positive pieces that are going on. And I just got out of that meeting at 6:00 tonight, so I barely had time to take notes and digest that. So at a later meeting, I'll have more information on that as to what they've been finding and where they've been helping. And with that, we'll move on to reports from council representatives, the boards and commissions. So Counselor Silvernagle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Arts and Cultural Commission did not have a quorum, so we did not meet. Next meeting is scheduled for September 10.
All right. Counselor Belz?
I have two reports, one on the Library Board. We met May 9th. We discussed, I'm sorry, June 13th. We discussed updating the policies, which some of the circulation policies have been updated. And then the director talked about the summer reading challenge that is for children and adults. The next meeting will be this, it's the second Wednesday. There'll be no meeting in August, so it'll be September. And then the other meeting I attended was the Monmouth Traffic Safety Commission. And Chief Talon did a great presentation on the traffic data collector, which is being used, which, I'm not sure if it's out right now, but I know while it was being used, it would track people's, as they were coming towards the collector and going away from the collector, figuring out what people's speeds are. And this is in order to help determine where maybe traffic signals or safety devices should be, where they can figure out where people are speeding the most and using the streets the most. That's my report. Next meeting is September 10.
All right, thanks. Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, we had a historic commission and we met on June 6th. It was really a workshop debrief of the last month, which was very important after the property owners of Monmouth on the 23rd. Also, the staff had a lot of promising contacts with property owners that are really interested in going to this national historic registration. Also, they, we certified a local government grant, we're in the next steps of that for the historic committee. Also, the committee got really excited and they're trying to at least get two buildings within the city to try to work with the people that own, to get them on the national historic list. So it's a, it's a go deal for the, for the committee to have some, a challenge to try to get going. Probably 100, 150 hours of work to get one on it and to see if they qualify, isn't just take the picture and go. So, and they have about five places, but two they're gonna try to work on pretty hard. So I'm really happy in that. And then the other thing we're gonna try to do is get some aerial photographs of our downtown area of our historical and then compare them to the old photographs that we've had around the turn of the century. So try to get those done within the next two months. That's what I'm hoping for.
All right, thanks. And Counselor Schinkel?
The Parks and Recreation Board, I believe they had a potluck at the park. I was not able to attend. Some other things going on, but Counselor Sharmar, were you there? Maybe she can report on it better than I could.
Yeah, it was the annual joint meeting of the Parks and Recreation and the Tree Board. And we did have a delicious potluck. Thank you to everyone who brought dishes. And the Tree Board had a quorum, so we were able to approve minutes from past meetings. And we did that. We also talked about the trees, in particular, the trees that were planted at Monmouth Elementary School in memory of some children and a mother who had died there. And we were a little bit concerned about how those new trees would get watered in the summer. And Paul Seaver, who's a member of the Tree Board and lives right next to the school, agreed to go over and fill the alligator bags with water every, whenever they run dry. We also talked about the time capsule ceremony that's taking place, is coming Monday at Main Street Park at 9:00, is it?
10:00.
10:00. And there is a pear tree that has been planted there. And there are all the interesting things about life in Monmouth in 2017 when the, when the eclipse occurred, will go into the time capsule and be opened in three or 400 years later. No, I'm exaggerating that. I think it's like 200.
It'll be 151 years.
It doesn't really matter, because none of us will be. And we also had a brief discussion about trees in the beauty strips and the new program that we might be thinking about in the future for, for offering trees to be planted in people's yards. But that conversation will continue when we meet again in September. So, thank you.
All right, thanks. Are there any community announcements?
I, yeah, I have an announcement. Yes. It's not too late to get in your application for the Monmouth Independence Rotary Club Grand 4th of July Parade. Tomorrow is the last day that you can get early bird registration for $20. After that, and on the day of the parade, it will cost you $26. So I have applications up here. If you have a group or a club or an organization or anything, a dog or a cat, you wanna be in the parade, just come see me and I'll get you an application. It's coming up faster than you think it is. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Scott?
Yep, thank you. So a couple of things, the Highway 99 project, the electric side, all the core work on 99 itself is pretty much in all the boring. Now they have to go start switching over services. That project's doing okay. Water's getting wrapped up. We intend to ignite system, trying to stay out of the way during the day. That seemed to work pretty well. They had all sorts of problems with valves and different things, trying to get things shut off and things wouldn't work. But that's what happens when you deal with underground systems. But that's moving along. Power and Light Building, we actually had the metal come in, so we actually have that. They're working at, doing a pavement on a couple of buildings there. One of them we'll actually use for the police department to do training on. Then we'll move in and the fire department will come and actually pick that one down. Finance Department, interim audit, they come in this time of year, then obviously the audits later, but they do initial work, do some scans, meet with departments. And we did pretty well with that. Police Department, they had one, one new recruit, go through academy, get out, did very well there. We had one that actually started a week, graduated from Western, is now in academy. So we'll get her back in a while. And then just kind of business note, so we have an antique store going into where the old Monmouth hardware building was, actually moving over from Independence. And then with the fine pickings, just a little bit down, it's nice to get a couple stores if you can bounce around where the Hadley Bakery was. That's, that is now Mondo's Restaurant, so they did some nice work in there. So we're back almost, almost to full occupancy again. And just an interesting note is once the city started paying some attention to downtown and got some really willing property owners, we'd been, you know, functionally occupied or almost occupied for probably about seven, eight years now. So that's a pretty good run, including through recessions.
All right, thanks.
Can I ask a question? I didn't understand what you were talking about when you mentioned something about power and light and that power and light will move in next. What was?
Oh, Highway 99.
Yeah.
And so we had to take down all the electric lines. And so we put those into underground, so they've been doing all the boring work. And so all that, that work is done. Now we have to come in and then actually start switching over all the businesses.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to citizen comment time. This time is reserved for citizens to comment on items that are not on the agenda. A maximum of three minutes per item, please. If you wish to comment on specific agenda items, there is a sign up sheet in the back of the room and you're free to sign that. And then we'll bring that up when we start the business part of the agenda. So anyone like to come in?
Yes, sir.
And if you could state your name and where you're from?
Absolutely. So my name's Matthew Mallett, and I wanted to thank you guys for listening to me today. I'm with Oasis Cannabis down here on Main Street. So I had a few things that I wanted to talk about. One of them was, I know that the city says that we can't have a sign. If we can only have one sign, it has to be adjacent to the building. I was curious, if we did cross promotions with another business and we had our sign outside of their location, is that, is that compliant?
That's really not a council conversation. That would be...
We could sure follow up with Matthew.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Because we have extended...
I just wanted to make a present.
On some streets where someone can have it as much as, I think it's 80 feet from the property.
We need to get back to, I don't wanna say something.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Perfect. I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm here and, you know, introduce myself and kind of bring up some of these issues. And we definitely can speak in the future about some of those things.
Okay, thanks.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Anyone else for citizen comments?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Christopher Lopez, 533 Edwards. And I, I wanted to, wanted to bring up an item that was not directly related to what's going on tonight, but perhaps adjacent while we're speaking about all the improvements on 99, the Highway 51 corridor there. And I was down in Corvallis this past week, driving through South Town. Couldn't help but notice yet again the pedestrian crossings on 99 in South Town Corvallis. There are four on 99 there. And three of those four are as close as Madrona is to the lights. So I just encourage the council to revisit the idea of trying to pursue pedestrian, pedestrian crossing lights with ODOT again. I know we've done that in the past and it's been, ah, an uphill slope perhaps, but I, I do believe it's worth it. And I'd like to see while we're talking about these areas, wrapping that into the conversation. So, thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
I would like to ask you a few things, please.
Okay.
If you were looking for a look at people, come to talk. About here. All right. Sorry, I'm not good with public speaking. Give me a courtroom, I can talk. Get me in here with everybody. I'm a little nervous. I am, my name is Wendy Palm, Lauren Lindsay, whichever last name you want to take. I work for the city of Monmouth, for the court clerk, and I've been here for about 16 years. I wanted to touch base a little bit in regards to the COLA issue from the budget last meeting. It was presented as a 3.6 for nonrepresented employees, and then just out of the blue, changed during the meeting and no one, none of the employees got a chance to really speak on that. There's constantly unfair issues with COLAs based upon represented and nonrepresented employees. Over the years, the represented employees are constantly getting more of a COLA increase than any of the other ones. Most of the other nonrepresented people, most of that budget comes out of general fund. And anytime you guys wanna cut that, then a lot of the general fund people have to suffer. If you take into consideration how much minimum wage goes up every year, a couple of years ago, when nonrepresented people got less than a half a percent for cost of living, the, some of the non, some of the represented people got 1.75, the others got 2.5. But people that were paying minimum wage there paid basically went up 5.13%. And basically, I don't agree with, it's in the graphs to try and compare, to try and keep the nonrepresented people similar or close to represented people. And then it just gets cut with no discussion from employees at all. When minimum wage goes up, everything goes up, gas, groceries. And I believe by constantly having the nonrepresented people so much lower than the represented people, you're basically showing that they're not as worth as an employee based upon other employees that have representation. So that was a little bit what I wanted to talk about. And I guess that's about it.
All right, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Most of you know, I'm Bill Foster. Just wanted to comment a little bit about, we had a planning commission meeting a couple, three weeks ago, and some of the councilors did attend. And we were dealing with the land use, trying to figure out what to do there. Some comments were made in there that kind of stuck to me a little bit. And it was basically, comments were made like, yeah, the previous administration did that, the previous administration did this. Leaving it to believe that it was recently, current, recent administrations that set the policies of where we are today. You actually have to go back about 12, 15 years, some of you have been around that long, serving around the city, to realize those are when the policies were set. It was not the Scott McClures or Mark Fancys that have caused the issue. You also have to remember the property owners have a right to decide when they wanna sell. If they could have changed, then the council back then could have made the rules to make them do that. But now it continues to continue wanting to beat up on the people that are trying to run the city, asking, why can't you do something about that? If it's that easy, then do it. Don't continue to beat up on the people that are trying to work to run the city. Concentrate on issues that really matter. Try and figure out what you're gonna do with the youth. We're gonna be starting getting more homeless people in here. Don't worry about basketball hoops in the street, for Pete's sakes. That's kids. We don't have a place for the kids to play anyhow. Let's do something about that. We have had councils in the past that decided they don't wanna do anything. That was about 12 years ago, 14 years ago, maybe it was 15, 16 years ago. Then we got a group of people in here that said, we can do something. Urban renewal came in and we started making progress. Unfortunately, as a whole, what I see right now is we're going back to about 14 years ago. Let's see how much we can disrupt. Let's see how much progress we can't make. Let's not be thankful for, for the police departments and the city heads we have. Let's beat up on them all the time instead of letting them do their job. I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but it just, the more I think about it, it just irritates me, and I'm sure a lot of other people that get concerned about this. 13, 14 years ago, the cities, the citizens finally said enough is enough and got, and voted them out. Now are we headed that way now? I don't know. But let's start doing the business for the whole city. Forget about trying to protect neighborhoods. You were elected to represent the whole city, not neighborhoods. Let's get back to doing your job, please.
Any other comments on non-agenda items?
Members of the council, Mayor Milligan, Senator. My name is Kim Dorn. I'm a resident of this city. I am employed with the police department. I have been employed with our department for 22 years. The only other time I have ever come before this council was to thank you for your support for our police department, that magnificent facility that we were so blessed with, that the majority of our citizens said they felt we needed. I am here today for a couple of different reasons. The first I'll address with you now, the second I'll address with you during the agenda items. As I've said, I've lived in Monmouth, I work here, I've worked here for 22 years. For the past 14 years, I have been a nonrepresented employee, which means I've been a supervisor at the police department. I am very disappointed in the city council's decision to not use the index for our COLA increase. There is an index that this city has voted upon, this city council has voted upon to use. It has been used for the last 12 years. This last meeting, you voted to change that. It seemed to me to be an arbitrary number to not use the COLA index that has been used. It was lower than that. You talked at this council meeting about merit increases and things like that, that employees would get in addition to the COLA. What about those of us that have been here for a long time and don't get those merit increases any longer? I haven't seen a merit increase for 12 years. I, I have the same information that our finance director gave to you and to our budget committee in regards to the COLA for all of the city employees. The officers that I work with have consistently seen a 2 and even up to 4% COLA each year as part of their contract. I don't have a contract. No one speaks for me. So I'm speaking now for myself and the nonrepresented employees of my agency, the nine nonrepresented employees of my agency. Over the past 12 years, this information that was given to all of you, you could see that the nonrepresented employees have received, or excuse me, that the represented employees, those under contract, have received 6.9% more of a COLA than those of us that are nonrepresented at my police department. So using this index, you could have granted us the 3.6% COLA that was part of it. This would have helped with this disparity that we face with our officers making more in a COLA than we do. There is a disparity and you could have addressed it, but you chose not to. You chose to pick an arbitrary number, 2.5%, and give us that. I'm grateful that I got even any COLA. I understand that not everybody does. But I also understand that there's an index that you use, there's a reason you use it. At times that has been lower, at times it has been higher. I don't feel that it was very fair for you to do that to all the nonrepresented employees of this city, to say to us, no, 3.6 is too high, we'll give you 2.5. I have sat through the council meetings, I've read minutes, I listen to the meetings if I'm not able to be here. During the past work session, this council had a meeting at the back table, a work meeting, and you voted to approve up to $12,000 to appropriate for review of the police department. You did not give us the COLA, the full index COLA that you have used for 12 years. An hour later, maybe a little more than that, you voted to use $12,000 of our police department budget to review the management of our department. That did not sit well with me, it did not sit well with my, with my fellow employees and my fellow officers. I'll say the rest of what I have to say during the agenda so that I follow the rules that are set forth. And we'll speak about that during the agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on non-agenda item? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the business agenda. And is there someone who can bring me that list of people who signed up for the business agenda items? Thank you. So our first agenda item is a reappointment of board and commission members. And in this list, there's actually someone new being appointed to the, to the planning commission, was it there?
Patty Dixon.
Yeah, Patty Dixon. So is this one that, is it Phillips or?
It's me. So Mayor and council, you have before you a list of people who are asking to be reappointed to the boards and commissions, and the ones who are not requesting appointment. And additionally, Patty Dixon has requested appointment to the planning commission. I also included the current vacancies that we have on our boards and commissions. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Phillips, is there still in City Hall, is there still a, or something on the wall with the applications for the commissioners?
Yes, they're also on our website.
Okay, so for somebody who maybe doesn't have a printer, they can just come to City Hall and take one of those.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So is there any other discussion there?
There's no other activity other than the addition of Patty Dixon to the planning commission. I don't, I don't see the planning commission noted that. So everything is stable except for the addition of...
So do I have a motion on this?
I'd move that we approve the, the reappointments and the additional appointment of Patty Dixon to the planning commission as presented.
That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just, I would only just note that we are down quite a ways for arts and culture. So any of you with arts and culture bent, you have a chance to make an impact. And the same would be true with the, the Monmouth Engage Retail recruitment. Those are the ones that seem to be most significantly short of members as well as the library board. So we all need, I think, to recruit and be conscious this is an opportunity to provide a positive impact on the community.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, like sign? All right. So those people are reappointed. And I'll have forums at the Board of the Board and Board of the Commission, so I'll be recruiting. And our next item of business is recycling surcharge. I believe this is yours, Scott?
Yeah, thanks. This is gonna be a rare time when I say that a forum entry affects something in Monmouth, but this is actually it. Brant Sanitary does our solid waste collection and recycling services in Monmouth. And we've set up the rate structure so we keep rates as low as possible, but the company can have a reasonable rate of return. Where our cost model's shown up until recently is that they got a small amount for recycling materials. Now what happened just recently is China internationally rejected recyclables, so everybody's disrupted across our country and actually globally. What's happening in a lot of places, some are just canceling not doing recycling anymore, and then other ones are doing adjustments to make up for the losses that came from that. In the case of Brant's, where it used to make a little bit of money, it's a double whammy. You, you lose the small revenue stream that was there, and then now it has to go into landfill, so now you pay shipping charges. So with the shift, Brant's has been losing about $7,000, $9,000 a month. So that's the swing that's happened on that. Not sustainable by any means. So what we came up with, talking to the council also, since Brant's covers both towns, is doing a $1.90 surcharge that would go to basically all, all the core accounts, all your residential income. your residential and commercial accounts. The hope is that one day, we leave it isolated as a recycling charge. If something shifts, we can recycle more, or even a lot, then we can maybe reduce that or take it back at some point. But at this point, we really need to put that dollar ninety into place so we can keep Brant's stable and functional. And so with that, I have any questions? Josh Brant is here, if you have anything specific for him.
And real quick, this is a resolution authorizing a recycling surcharge for certain solid waste disposal services, and this would be Resolution 1867. So are there any questions of?
I have a question. Is, is there anything planned in the future for educating the people in Monmouth about how to minimize waste?
Yeah, good to hear. Josh Brant here. We have some things in place. We've been a little bit slower than other haulers in the sense of getting the appropriate things out to our customers. One was, I have a close relationship with the processor and supervisor of Garden Services. He's actually a member of Monmouth. He lives in Monmouth. The hope was that I could actually hold off and actually not have a surcharge for our community. I was hoping there would be a market, they would step up somewhere. We didn't quite get that, so I couldn't push quite longer. So we're a little bit behind everybody else, but we've gotten flyers out and everybody's bill. I'm in the process of making a website, and I'm trying to get it done as fast as I can. And so those are going to be two things we utilize, as well as both city, any of their media outlets that they will provide for us. And then we also have an opportunity, if the city's deem it necessary, to have a meeting at a facility big enough to handle it, have Clay Warner from Garden Services and I speak in front of the community if need be. That's a backup if the community seems interested. If not, then we're going to stick to publications and media outlets.
I have a couple more questions if I may.
Go ahead.
Do you know what percentage of the solid waste stream here in Monmouth is plastic garbage bags? I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, not garbage, plastic grocery bags.
Is plastic grocery bags? I don't have a percentage on that. It's a major concern and problem for us. What happens and the reason for that, why we don't take it and it's actually garbage, is the processors, pretty interesting. It actually kicks things to the appropriate direction by weight. What happens is those get caught in the augers, which then create a massive problem. It gets shut down. About a month and a half ago, Garden Services was shut down for six days, forcing us to look at other outlets to use our commingle. Fortunately for us, it was only one incident because we were on a yard debris week rather than a commingle week, which was nice. But that's one of the big concerns, and so we've really limited the amount of things. And by we, I mean our processor, not me as Brant Services, limited the things that we can take. And the main reason for that is to hopefully create that market again, get our percentage of contamination down, and then hopefully it reopens the market, whether that's China or somewhere else, to actually make it a profitable commodity, because right now it's not. And so that's one of the main concerns.
So just a follow-up question to that. Would you recommend that the city council go the way of Corvallis and not allow grocery stores or other retail establishments to use plastic grocery bags?
Oh, it'd be a major help for me, of course.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if for us right now, I mean, it's basically just garbage. You know, we have the same concern and problem with, what, I don't know, let's say a timeline ten years ago when it came to to-go boxes. Unfortunately, they made this recyclable, reusable material. The problem is, we can't process it once it's got food or anything in it, so it ends up actually just having to go to the landfill anyways.
And just one last question.
Of course.
A Monmouth resident contacted me and asked how flexible Brant's would be in terms of the pickup of the yard waste. This person said, we don't have much at all in winter, and we've got a lot more than our every other week pickup in the summer is. Is there any kind of a flexible program that you would have like that?
We don't have anything in place for yard debris and plastics. It's one of those things, that's why we can't take extras. That's something that we can discuss as a, as a rate that would be implemented. Right now, there's nothing in place because we don't have actually anything in our rate system to, you know, extra for yard debris or for plastics for that matter. You actually have to just get another cart. So part of the way they could do it is add a yard debris cart in the summertime and lose and take away the yard debris cart in the wintertime. That is a service that we do provide.
Okay, all right, I'll pass that along. Thank you very much.
And maybe this is a better question for Scott. Why, why does the business have to come to us to talk about their rates? Can you go through that?
Yeah, so really pulling it back, yeah, so we grant a franchise, it's actually an exclusive franchise to Brant's do this. So, so part of that governance is we actually set the parameters of the program, what type of recycling options, you know, what frequency, including a yard debris event. We have a whole ordinance that actually just does solid waste, so we're actually in charge of that. So like in this case, you could actually say, no, it's a surcharge. At some point, Josh would say, I'm going out of business, and that'd be bad, but actually is, is, you are essentially governing the system.
Okay. Scott?
Yeah, I just went through this in exhibit and everything else, which I thought we gave a raise three years ago. And Phil, I first insisted, oh, no, it was three years ago. You're using that exhibit, but this is the cost that it is.
Oh, yeah, 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 we actually did one in fifteen.
Right. And my other deal is that, well, I'm, is that the one ninety is for all carts, right? I mean, it's for, your monthly bill is one dot ninety, a surcharge on your monthly bill.
Correct.
Okay, because the way it's kind of said here, it says a surcharge on all cart, recycling, and yard debris. You know, it isn't like, it kind of had me confused a little bit. I'm just trying to make sure.
Well, it might be written that way, just because if you have service with us, those things, you have the opportunity to have those provided at no cost. If you want an additional item, then we discuss the cost. But every person, commercial or residential, if they have service with us, has the opportunity to have a yard debris and a recycling container. Whether they take that service or not is up to them. The reason for the one nine, the surcharge was, like Scott had talked earlier, I don't know how the market's going to be. Right now, it continues to raise. Our goal for this is not, is why we discussed not doing an actual rate increase. We're doing okay right now. Fuel is still okay. I wanted to stick away from that and continue to, to work with what we have. This is a little bit more in regards to just plastics in itself at the higher cost. So having a surcharge will, like Scott said, hopefully allow us to maybe reevaluate it. And I'm basically covering my costs. This is not a me getting money from this. Probably, this is actually me just covering the deficit, and that's all we're looking for in the dollar ninety.
Is there a sunset clause on this?
No.
Just throw it on. You are the sunset clause.
Yep.
Right.
Well, now, that was my question, Josh, is, is how, these additional costs, how, how long do you foresee this being an issue? Is it something that is going to go away, or is market dependent, or how, how permanent is this?
Right now, it's at its worst. So to break the numbers down a little bit more, not to get too technical, I used to get anywhere from zero to seven dollars profit for recycling. I do anywhere from eighty to about a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty tons. And so when I talk numbers, it's zero to seven dollars a ton that I take in. Right now, in the last four months, it started at seventy-two sixteen, and it's raised all the way up to a hundred and seven dollars and fifty-one cents. So right now, we're going the wrong direction. I don't know where it's going to go as we get better, as communities get better. I hope that that will flatline, at least maybe at one oh seven fifty-one, because that is extremely high. I hope that it works its way down. One thing that Monmouth and the dependents has done is when I kind of started to take over, we were running at probably about a fourteen percent contamination, which isn't terrible, but it's a bit high. We actually have, in the last four months, five months, with a little extra hard work, got it all the way down to seven. So we're moving in a good direction. The hope is that we continue to do that. Salem implemented a fifteen dollar extra charge if anybody does it wrong. I'm, again, trying to stay away from that in the hopes that we are doing a good job, and I hope other communities pick up. Our worst is Salem, unfortunately, and so they get the best rates when it comes to, it's in their contract with Garden Services. And unfortunately, they're trying to possibly work something out that allows it to be based on the hauler instead, in which you could maybe foresee a change much sooner if that happens. If not, I'm basically at the mercy of the state on how they, how they do that.
And then a comment that, this isn't just like a forever agreement either, because when we come back to the franchise agreement, this will be evaluated in a franchise agreement as well.
And you can bring back the right issue if you want to.
Right.
But it's not like, it's, it could get buried.
It'll, it'll show back up at the next franchise agreement conversation.
Yeah.
Which is when?
We used to, usually, we actually wait till the hauler, they, they usually run several years, and if their, their numbers are just not looking right, they come and they talk to the cities and then do an adjustment.
All right. Well, the, the, relative to that, and I recall that, that discussion that we had three years ago, and you weren't involved, Josh, but three years ago, I mean, there was discussion of, you know, the recycled rates, there was, there was discussion of the cost of tipping fees, and, and, you know, when I heard that there was, that there was a recycling issue, I thought, well, we're going to be talking about, we're going to have a lot of data here. Because there's a lot of data that, that drives this, because I got to think that you're paying more for landfill fees. But I'm not tearing any of that. I mean, so, you, you know, I mean, I, I'm, I, because to your question, I mean, it's our responsibility to do the due diligence for the, the citizens of Monmouth and, and our part, and then independents there, to make certain that, that the services are good and, and the local business is supported, which is important to all of us, and the rate structure is, is transparent and understandable. I don't know how we get to buck ninety, other than to say, you know, two months ago, China says we're not taking it anymore. So I'm, frankly, I need a little more information. I'm sympathetic to it, but in terms of being able to do the due diligence to our rate payers, I feel like we ought to, it's my feeling, we ought to have a little bit more data.
And what data are you looking for?
Well...
Other than my, my base numbers of the costs that I'm losing on, ever on a monthly basis?
How are you getting to that number? In other, in other words, what are you, seeing, I don't know the industry, but, but I, I would like to know, why is it that, that you have come to one ninety? I'd like to know what your other costs are. You know, your, your costs at Coffin Buick, or, you know, whatever it is down there. Because that's got to be it. I mean, I, I mean, I, of course, I mean, that, that was a big, that was a big talk, you know, big discussion about the, three years ago, about the, I got tipping fees that are going up, and, and we keep saying, well, we're going to be recycling more, so there's the tipping, you know, that tipping fee ought to be going down. Well, no, that's going up too. And it's, I'm very angry at the data we got then. And again, it's, it's, I'm sympathetic, you know, and I, I would love to do this. I, I just feel like, from my own perspective, would like to have a little more data, and that we can look at over a little bit longer.
Josh, if I could. Josh, I think it's, it's fairly direct to what we laid out. Without getting, you know, entire models of the whole operation, it really comes down to they're losing seven, nine thousand a month. To get them back level, that's where the dollar ninety comes from. Just multiply that out by the number of accounts, that'll generate back that same seven, nine thousand dollars, and just get some leveled up. So it's actually, this is way more direct than what we normally do.
Well, I guess, I guess, fair enough, and I, and I'm not, I'm not accusing anybody of deceit or anything else, so please don't, don't think that, but...
Yeah, I'm currently still losing money at a dollar ninety. Right now, I'm sitting at two dollars and six a customer, is what it costs me to do recycling, and so a dollar ninety, I'm actually still losing sixteen cents. So that was where I was trying to figure out a number to get, that was fair to our community. The other thing we're missing out is that I run a twenty-four hour recycling center, which people can utilize as much as they want. I take that at no cost, and that's still plastics that we continue to take. The other option is that we have to really reevaluate what we're going to do with plastics, and that could easily determine that I do no long, no longer have a recycling center.
Yeah, sure, sure.
That's an issue. And I know that a lot of people that live in town that use your recycling center.
Correct.
So, I mean, you know, the people that are in town.
Yeah. And it's a great thing for the county, because unfortunately, we don't have recycling out in the county, and so they utilize it on a regular basis with the people.
So any more questions? With that, do I have a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 1867, which authorizes a church surcharge for certain solid waste services.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
In that resolution, and it's here, I notice, so, and it says that the motion would make it be, I think, a dollar ninety put on that motion. Okay, that's what I'm saying.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so the motion's been amended to include the surcharge of a dollar ninety for certain solid waste services?
Correct.
You're good with that oral?
Yes.
Okay. So that amendment has been moved and seconded, and so any further discussion?
I'd just like to throw this out there. What I, what I would like to see, it appears that costs are kind of, we're not exactly sure where they're going, is perhaps we can, you know, if we authorize it at this point, we revisit it three, four, or five months from now to see, to see where things are at, to see if we continue it, but just to get, to take the pulse of, of what's going on. Because I hate to see, you know, you authorize the increase and then the need goes away, yet the customer is still paying for it.
Yes, the city manager will bring it back up in October, maybe. That works issue.
Some communities have done a quarterly base on how to do it. The thing is, is though it could go down, that means that it, it could go the other, other direction as well. I think that we're already at month six, so I think it'd be a little bit easier to address on a yearly basis, or at least be read, readdressed come December. The idea would be that we can get this implemented, move forward for the rest of the year, it helps cover the, the forty thousand dollars, and I'm already, I mean, I'm not going to recoup that.
Right.
And then, again, address it in December to whether we're going to change that to a quarterly thing, a yearly thing, or all is, it either works.
Yeah, I'd second. I prefer six months, and I think what, I think a check-in, just because it's new, is probably, it's, it's a good idea. What we didn't want to get to is, is a yo-yo effect.
Sure.
Where we're just constantly moving the thing up and down. People like consistency, so we'd be better off, instead of, just try to pick a good middle number and see if that works.
Correct.
Yeah, when we have that, when we have that check-in, assuming this passes, you know, I'd like to have some, you know, and I'd be happy to, to talk about it when we get closer to that time, and some data to drive the numbers, so we can, we can see that, other than to say, you know, take what I'm losing, divide that by the number of people, and that's what the surcharge is going to be. I mean, the, and the inclusion of the rate, of the two thousand nine rate, that's bad information. We ought to have current rate on that. I'm, I'm supportive, I'm going to support this, because I, I feel it's essential that we keep a local provider here. I don't want to have some, you know, multinational coming in here and running this, because we need to have, we'll be running this, in my opinion. But, but I would, I would hope that we are, when that comes back and that, that check-in, that there's some good data to support the numbers. And I'm not suggesting that the numbers aren't accurate, I just, it would feel better if we had.
I, I do have a report that states two thousand eighteen and two thousand seventeen with me right now. It breaks down all of our...
Sure. Yeah, that's fine.
Question? I don't know how this works, like, within a, an addendum or an amendment to revisit this in six months.
I think just the director of staff. Just tell me, the director of staff.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 1867, which authorizes a surcharge of a dollar ninety for certain solid waste services. All those in favor? for certain solid waste services. All those in favor of a layman, this is a roll call.
Counselor Beltz? Counselor Sheenckel?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Hi.
Counselor Sharmer?
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Hi.
All right, and then it passes. And now we're moving on to Highway fifty-one's presentation.
Yeah, just the overview on this, you know, several years back, we got a grant that was going to fully reconstruct Highway fifty-one from, that's the punchline, as you know. So, going from Hesley down to the S-curve, as things we found out at the prior meeting, there's some poor estimating practices on the part of ODOT. And at this point, with the money available, about one point five million dollars, their focus now is replacing the sidewalk on the north side of the street. And so with that, Bill Ness from ODOT is going to tell you where we are.
Thank you, Mayor Meldrum and Council citizens. This might be out of order, but I had a deja vu moment like you've never heard before. Thirty-two years ago, I worked for Skagit County Public Works, and I was a solid waste coordinator, managed the landfills, managed garbage, and I got to tell you, it was really, I love this town. It was fun to listen to solid waste conversations. Been way too long. Thank you, thank everybody for bringing that one up. Maybe it's a little young again, or what else do you want to like? Okay, back to business. We're here to talk a little bit, and not for a long time, but just a little bit, about where we are in Highway fifty-one, Heffley Street to Main Street. Let me also add to, Andrew Blair is here with me from ODOT. That's why this looks a little more professional than last time I did it. He's really good at these things. So this is to talk about what we've, when we left the last meeting, and our mission was to create a better estimate, of what it is we can do with the funds we have. Like Scott said, we have the one point four, give or take, million dollars. And what can we do with that to help the city? So I want to talk about what I think we've come up with that way. So... All right, I take it all back. Nice, nice, I hear you. Perfect, perfect. Okay, that's very good. Does it go to the right at all? Probably does. Okay, that's fine. Okay, and the point of this, and I don't know, I'm going to turn this, I don't know what the best place to put this is. Okay, I think there's more chairs, please gather around. This is basically a view of Main Street, this direction. Heffley is right here, going north south. This is Atwater, going north and south. And then here, kind of the end of the S-curve, the S-curve's coming like this. So the end of the sidewalk, and I think it's a ramp building right here, if I'm not wrong, the end of the sidewalk ends right at this red line. And our project would go from this point, the yellow shade, you can kind of see the sidewalk, goes up to Atwater, makes a little crossing with a curve, they'll have a ramp in it, make a crossing in it, be another one on this side, on the west side. And then it'll come over here to Heffley, do the same thing. So that fundamentally would be the project. This would be a concrete sidewalk, replace the asphalt, six foot wide, I believe, ADA compatible, in accordance with all the ADA requirements. We run nice efficient, so we can go back to that. But that's fundamentally what the site plan for the project looks like, about thousand linear feet of sidewalk. Let's go to the next one and talk about the breakdown of the costs. There you go. Okay. So this talks about, this is a real summary of the cost estimate for the project. It includes everything. It includes the engineering, the right-of-way, utilities, everything involved. And so I'll try to second guess a couple of questions that go down through this, but engineering is pretty straightforward, percentage off the top. The right-of-way is a number that we put in there to accommodate, we've got an interesting legacy now at ODOT related to ADA ramps. We're trying to do our part and do them right. Basically, this right-of-way cost is a cost associated with a few things really. One is ADA ramps, where they're adjusted to, they basically would be removed or rebuilt, I believe. That's normally how they work. Not very many of them pass the requirements. And this is just an additional right-of-way that we would need. If we have to put a landing back behind where the existing right-of-way, we haven't, and again, we haven't really gotten into the detailed engineering on this. So these are just numbers that we put together to put an estimate there. The real costs are going to be what they are. So this gets us on point. The next one has mostly to do with stormwater improvements. You know, if you go down that sidewalk during a real rainstorm, you know you're into a little bit of water occasionally in those low spots. So this will take care of that. Mole is a typical fraction on construction costs. It's basically if a contractor comes in, sets his equipment, at the end of the job, you leave the percentage. Roadway basically is talking about the cost of the sidewalk. So this number here, this two hundred thousand, really is where you get the actual cost of the concrete sidewalk. Signals, what this number is, and I want to be a little careful, but our intent would be to provide a little bit more safety environment at the intersection of Heffley, so we're talking about those rapid, what are they, Russ? Rapid RFPs, flashing lights to let people know if people are in the intersection. Illumination is another light, possibly at the Heffley intersection, and so on down. Temperate protection is basically erosion sedimentation control during the construction of the project. Can you all hear me okay? Okay. Construction contingencies is another percent that we do. Construction engineers have an instructor out on site during the work. This last number here is various things like right-of-way, what was it? I can't remember. We had a note here, and I was going to use it as a, as a sort of a crutch, but I can't remember. If anybody's interested, we get your breakdown, it's fifty thousand dollars out of the total. It's not a major number. And then you take the construction cost, when you add these all up, except for any bearing in right-of-way, and utilities, start at mole and go down, you get to nine hundred and eight thousand. But when you add the whole thing from the top to the bottom, it comes out one point three eight two. These numbers we get from our engineering department that's across from us, Building A, and they're initial estimates. That's really about all it is, is an estimate. And of course, then, if we go ahead with this work, then we'll, we will get into the engineering, get into a lot more of the details when we refine this number, but we're pretty confident at this point that this is a good number for us, because the budget we have is one point four three million or some such number like that. So it fits pretty nicely. You don't have to give much back to us. So I think that's it. And the last slide was a simple one, just had questions.
So, Council, any questions?
I've got just a couple. One, the right-of-way acquisition, a little hard with my travel vision here, a hundred and eighteen thousand, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Hundred and eighteen thousand, and that is really primarily contingent upon the cutouts for the ramping?
That's one of the items. The other possibility for right-of-way is if we add illumination, that means we'd be adding, and this is at Heffley, we'd be adding poles and foundations, and it may be that those have to go outside of the sidewalk, and so that would be some acquisitions. Some, either a permanent easement or right-of-way purchase in that respect. So that's also part of that project. And I think it's primarily those two things.
That would be, that would be, if memory serves, that'd be like four of those ramps. Four handicap accessible ramps.
Oh, for two?
You got two on Heffley, two on Atwater.
Yeah.
And then, and that's it.
That's pretty much it. And then we've got the illumination of Heffley also. That, again, the poles.
Property values were high at Monmouth, but I reckon that's pretty high.
Does anybody own any property there?
Roxanne, do you have a question?
I think, did Counselor Carey have additional questions?
And I, thank you. And just real quickly, I didn't quite understand your moving from the subtotal construction of nine hundred and odd, and then the one point four, or one point three eight.
Absolutely.
You explained it, I just didn't hear it.
I'll do a better job this time, sorry about that. If you were to cut it off right at this point, from mobilization on down, that would, that would essentially constitute the construction cost. So if you started at the forty nine thousand, and you got down, that'd be the nine hundred and eight thousand. And then if you added the top three items, which are really non-construction related in a way, that would get us to the total.
That makes sense, thank you.
Thanks for asking, I appreciate it. I probably didn't do a very good job the first time.
It makes perfect sense this time.
Yeah, I used to get it on stage.
I just want to make sure I remember correctly, because this money has been allocated by ODOT. It can only be used for this project, is that correct?
Absolutely. Or this project or a portion of it, which is...
Something within that quarter.
Something within those limits. Good question. I should have brought that up, but you're absolutely right.
Okay, first thing is, the initial cost is two hundred thousand dollars to do the sidewalk. That's basically what we're looking at. And then on top of that, you have two hundred and thirty-five thousand for contingency. I can't see that good from here. And, yeah, let's go on down, fourth from the bottom, fourth from the bottom, come back up.
Two sixteen.
Two sixteen, contingency. So it's more for the contingency. So the contingency covers everything, plus what you already tried to explain would cost more in the right-of-way and everything. And then the temporary protection, I'm having a little trouble on that on temp, when we're already eight feet, I went and measured eight to twelve feet from the highway now, where does the temporary protection, I mean, I'm trying to get through to that point, is what I'm trying to say.
Good question. First off, on the temporary protection, like I say, we haven't designed it yet. From my experience in this type of project, we have to be sure to eliminate any kind of sediment or waste, like zinc and copper that comes off of the road, from getting into the, mainly it's sediment, getting into the storm grain system during construction. And how we accomplish that, you know, a lot of times they'll use, like you've seen silt fence on projects, some of the time they'll use those bio bags, they call them, that would go around all of our catch basins. It's things of that nature. It's hard to describe what it would be in the case of this project. It's really an estimate that they put together, and you can tell from the fact that it goes down to the dollar, it's also cut as a percent. So it may not be that much of a cost. It may be less, I just can't say. But it's what they call best management practices to keep the storm system clean. There's also, there's also a component to that, which has to do with, I think that might be actually up in the liability reimbursement. I'm not sure where they put it, but it might be permanent fixes on the system, so that it, in the future, when the project's done, it keeps the, like the zinc and the copper and the what-have-you that comes off the tires, out of the storm grain system as well. So it was an estimate that our hydrology, our hydrology people at ODOT felt that was appropriate for the job. But to get on any of these numbers, if you want a better breakdown of that, I can sure provide it.
My last question, I think, back to the blinking light, the hand-run blinking light. Now, they said if we took and put a blinking light on ninety-nine, we would lose the school crossing. That's what ODOT said, we would lose the school crossing there. We could not have a crossing person. We have a crossing person at ninety-nine, and that's fifty-one, fifty-one Heffley. Okay, so if you put the blinking light up there, do we lose the school crossing person? I mean, I'm trying to see the safety factor.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we'll run a crossing guard out there.
I mean, they say they staple these to come.
I'm going to put my best.
They got tough people on that one, you know, they got one with a tough shell.
I heard your question. What I'd like to do is give you a better answer than what I can give you right now. We've got the note. There's a person, Kristy LeFou, that we work with a lot, that has all these answers. If she was here, I'd be, it'd be perfect, but she's not. So I will have to go back and check with her to make sure what the effects of adding that are. But I hear what you're saying, and it seems kind of hard to imagine that you intentionally make it any less safe by putting a safety item in. Sounds like a fire drill. You know, we reckon it's probably be there, so.
That was what was presented to us from before.
Yeah.
Scott, what, maybe you can answer this too. What, how does this fit in? It's one point four million dollars for a sidewalk. And I'm having a hard time swallowing. How does this fit into the future of Highway fifty-one there? How far down is there we're looking at this being infused with improvements on the road itself, which is what this started out as?
I think that would be completely vague. We don't know. We have no idea if it ever will happen.
It's a hundred, it's a hundred and forty dollars a foot.
Actually, we calculated two thirty.
Even worse.
Yeah, we just did a sidewalk project perspective, because it has some complications attached to it. We just did one for thirty dollars a square foot. So we're having a hard time with the cost too, to understand just that. And I think where the council will need to figure out, you know, get the question answered here, we need to determine, we have a grant match on this. I mean, it's one thing, you don't want to turn down money, but we have to make a decision that whether we want to drop a hundred and forty thousand dollars into a sidewalk.
Is we're in percent on this cost project.
The question I've got is, when we last talked, we talked about this option A, and then like an option B of the south side we're dealt with. Did you do any numbers at all on our other options that we talked about?
Yeah, we did previous to this. In fact, in December, they did an estimate for the option, it would be just a sidewalk on the north and south side. Yeah, I don't have those numbers with me, but I remember about what it was. And it was more than our one point four million. It was something in the neighborhood of four point something million. And that is, the reason for that was because of the way the right-of-way sits on the south side, and just the geography, the topography out there, looked like we were going to be getting right into people's front yards with that one. That made it real expensive, because in this case, we'd have to possibly buy entire lots and do things like that. That's why that one got, why I was kind of hoping, you know, let's go to the north side and see what we can do up there. It's a lot cleaner than that. I can bring that one back too, though, if you're interested in a better breakdown. I don't know if that was ever shared to say, Counselor, but I'd certainly be happy to bring it back and share it too.
I don't know that we need one that goes larger, but there was one, and I don't know if Council actually directed you, but it was a question from one of our citizens about, could we look at what, what would it be if we only did the south side? But again, if land acquisition goes into that, because I was just at a cotton meeting on a street, well, Twelve Street over in Salem, and that one skyrocketed, because they couldn't just buy a strip of land, they had to buy the whole property.
Exactly.
And it completely blew things out of the water.
Yeah, that's right. It did. I can say with pretty good confidence that it would. If we just even did the sidewalk on the south side, we're going to be over our budget with that.
Well, I guess the last thing is, now that we're taking more questions back, you know, and then every once, we're back again. If you come back again, are you going to have a more basic cost for us? Or is it still, it's going to be numbers, kind of, I mean, the engineer's going to have to look at it now and really figure it out. So if you came back the next time, would we have a lot closer figures, is what I'm trying to ask.
We would. If we had some engineering involved in it. The real progression of things is, I think this contingency here, where it go, there it is, is based on a forty percent number, just because at this stage of a project, we're really even prior to conceptual design, you typically have to aim a little bit high on contingency. The answer to the question is, if we were at a point where we had a, where we're through what they call design approval, which is DAP, we'd have a much more accurate estimate. But to get there, would require that we do, we do spend some engineering dollars to get that information. It's an interesting kind of a chicken and an egg process in a way. I just don't know what that would do to our number. It's, you tell you, we've got some engineering design and some conceptual plans, and we have really broken it down into... engineering design and some conceptual plans, and we have really broken it down into more precise bid items and unit costs and that kind of thing, like you normally do on an estimate. We can't, we just can't say.
Byron?
Scott, if this was our final number here, what would our share of that be?
About a hundred and forty thousand.
And this is sidewalk only, not curb-gutter sidewalk?
That's correct.
And drainage.
And drainage.
And storm grain.
And that would be under the utility?
Yes, re right.
Right. But that would continue to be basically an open ditch? Kind of what we have right now.
Yeah, that's a good question, and I think we all went out as a group and looked at this a couple of times, and there were a couple of things being thrown around, I think an open, we have to have a certain amount of bioswell treatment, you know, where you've got an open ditch to cover that, I think, you know, normally a minimum of a hundred feet. But I think that it would, it may, it would look generally like it does now, with possibly a couple additional inlets in it, and some more pipe, but it would be, it'd be pretty much what we have now, as far as looks. The other question that was asked earlier is how would, I think it was, was how would this new project integrate with future road improvements? And that's one thing we're going to do, is look at that, because let's not figure this thing out, and then ten or fifteen years later, have to tear it up again to match new grades, so we will definitely keep that in mind. Try to think about the future while we design it.
This would though make that sidewalk eighty-eight inclined?
Yes, sir.
Because it apparently is not.
Yeah, apparently is not. I didn't ever put the, you know, the six-inch, we call it smart level on it, you know, and go through the process, but I think just the fact that it's asphalt.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Scott, timeline-wise, I mean, we can go around, 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 around on these numbers, but there's a certain point at which we've got to pull the trigger or back out. Where are we at on that, and do we want to have that discussion right now, as to?
No.
Okay, so we'll save that for a work session?
Some other day.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get a little bit more detailed, we'll get that when we have that, then we'll schedule a work session.
Okay. Would possibly add one thing if I could to that, as far as construction here, we're looking at two thousand twenty-one, and that, again, is about as accurate as any of this.
So any other questions, anyone has? Thanks.
If construction is two thousand twenty-one, when do you need our money?
This is why I'm an engineer. I think the way that works is that it's kind of an invoice system, so you don't have to, I could be wrong about that, I'll give back to you. I'm an engineer, but I don't know how to account for it.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that information.
I do appreciate you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I think we're going to take off.
All right.
All right, now we're moving on to adopting a resolution adjusting the water rates, and since I'm here, I'm just going to read this, the resolution establishing new rates for water service and repealing resolution number eighteen forty-five, and this would be resolution eighteen sixty-eight.
Thank you. So the, as you know, the water fund, the closed fund, and we do a periodic review, and needs to make sure what condition it's in, and a couple of years back, it wasn't in bad condition, and then a couple of things happened that did not help in that regard. Number one, we had to do a filtration system for our main well, that was a big one, and then the one that most recently we've talked about was Highway ninety-nine, that was another surprise project, so the fund was doing okay until we got the surprises. And so at this point, we did a rate increase last year, trying to get us in position with where the fund is sitting with all this work, we're still nowhere near where it needs to be. So we took a look at everything, ran through the budget process, we're recommending a ten percent rate increase, that keeps the fund solvent, and that's kind of all I can really say. You're actually a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars short of reserve policies, even with that rate increase, but at least it keeps the fund solvent. Here, if there, if we did not do the ten percent rate increase, like if you did zero, we would have to probably cancel projects to keep this fund, you're really talking money out of the money, is where this fund is, it's the weakest fund in our city right now. With that, any questions, Janice here, if you had extra numbers, Russ Cooper's here, if you have any technical questions.
What project would be on the chopping block first?
Probably the Willamette Well Field, we don't have to do that. If we don't, though, it's got some ramifications for our water supply, water quality plus volume. As we're going into a dry year, we're, it's going to be interesting how we get through the summer if things keep up like this, we could actually have some supply issues. The filtration system has to be done, that's a mandate, so we have to keep going on that, so we'd probably back off on other things. One that came up, just to make it worse, our engineer is really concerned about our main well, and he's recommending potentially abandoning that and redoing two more wells, so that's an additional expense that we're going to be looking at in the near future.
In the same area?
Yeah.
How are we doing on the, getting those filters in? Are we still online for February?
Yeah, we'll be good, actually, I'll be signing the contracts this week, and we'll get the crew going.
Okay, and just a little word to the wise, the city of Gates, which is practically a city on the, the bank of Detroit Lake, has no problem with the cyanotoxins from the algae there, and talking to the people there in Gates, they will tell you that they have filters that will filter all those toxins out. It costs that little town one point two million dollars for those filters, and where do they get the money? They got it from a grant from the state of Oregon. So I think it might be hubbards, instead of constantly going back to the payers, to look for some money that the state might have available.
In our case, we would not be eligible. They particularly go to little towns like Gates that are tiny, and they give grants there. At our level, we would get a financing package, and it would probably be a small grant if anything, but we are not going to be granted on the project.
Any other questions?
So this is about, so in three years, it's about a thirty percent raise on the water, we got eight, eight, and ten, and you compound it, so it's about a thirty percent. So you're saying that we're not there yet, we're going to have to raise it some more, is that what you're saying?
Oh, yes, yeah, and this is just dealing with current things, once we actually do the master plan, and we start looking through the whole system, we're going to have more projects out there too. So yeah, we've got a lot of pressure on this fund, this barely gets us, okay, I'll have to save the buffer.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
What's our resolution number?
Eighteen sixty-eight.
I'll move approval of resolution eighteen sixty-eight establishing new rates for water service. Second.
It's been moved in second, is it?
Yeah, nobody likes rate increases, nobody likes, you know, a couple, consecutive raises and so on, but water is one of the key factors in growth, and we have to have that, we're going to grow as a city commercially or residential or anything else. So that's an essential part of growing, and I think we'd all like to grow reasonably, and that includes water. And it's a proven fact that when you raise your rates, the usage does go down for a while, and so, you know, you don't always want to set it, but the rate makes work, I say. So if the rate keeps going up, we're going to have less and less, the volume is going to decrease. Thank you.
In the past, have we done PSAs as far as water reductions, trying to encourage to do that?
Yeah, yeah, particularly around summertime, we typically get to the people, you have the long irrigation, you know, you have the driveways, those kind of things.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call please, folks.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Belts?
Yes.
Counselor Sharmer?
No.
Counselor Schenkel?
Yep.
All right, and that motion passes, and now we'll move on to item number five, adopting a resolution adjusting the electric rates, and that's a resolution setting rates and charges for electric utility services and repealing resolution eighteen oh one, and this would be resolution eighteen sixty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, on this one, definitely a better shaped fund, this actually was our, really our strongest fund for a number of years, and strong enough to the point we've been absorbing bondal power rate increases without passing them on to customers, we've taken care of this with the mine net backfill payments without doing any increases, we were doing pretty well, and then just where things just finally got to the point where we need to look at where we're sitting with reserves, and then this one also got the surprise of Highway ninety-nine. We scheduled in the power light building, that was planned, and then really the one that pushed us over the edge was getting the Highway ninety-nine project done. So in this case, just as a key point, we've actually done no rate increases for years on this one, two rate decreases, which is fairly unheard of, but now we're at a point where we need to get the fund level back up again, and with the five percent rate increase, we would keep ourselves in good shape with our reserve policy and have a very strong fund.
Any questions?
What's the aggregate from the decrease to the increase, where are we though?
Oh, I think the decreases are like three, probably, they're both three percent.
Yeah, they're both three.
So yeah, so we're essentially just leveling up where we were.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move approval of resolution eighteen sixty-nine setting rates and charges for electric utility service and repealing prior resolutions.
A second.
It's been moved in second, is any further discussion?
I do have one question, I guess I circled it, and I didn't flip the page over until then, so effective May fifteenth, is that what I'm seeing on here also, so it's tracked you?
Any other discussion? Roll call please, folks.
Counselor Schenkel?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Yes.
Counselor Belts?
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Sharmer?
No.
And that motion passes. Now we're moving on to budget resolution, transfer street funds, and this would be the resolution approving a transfer for the budget year twenty seventeen eighteen, and directing the finance director to make appropriate entries, and this would be resolution eighteen seventy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I bring forward one more transfer beyond what I brought to you two weeks ago at the budget meeting, and I apologize for the last minute entry onto your agenda. We were processing our May monthly reports that we do as timely as we can for department heads, and the public works director and I were looking at the results subsequent to March and seeing that we are generally trending much higher than was anticipated over the course of the whole year. As I looked at trends, prior year trends, and if you look back to your budget document, you'll see that we were on a fairly steady increase, and then of course, as you know, the auditors came in and said, we need to be doing more work in the street fund, and so the public works director took it to heart and got out there and got doing it. As well, there were some council-directed tasks related to the sidewalk condition inventory, downtown parking signs, et cetera, and so basically, it has been a good thing in the sense that we have been, as we've been instructed to do, spend down those highway gas taxes, but at an increasing trend rate that I was unable to predict until looking at the May, April and May results. And so as I look out to June, I think an additional fifty thousand should be more than adequate. We've had a lot of extra overtime spent in the water fund, but our, but our regular time, if you will, in the street fund has been increased and increasing. So all of that to say, the fifty thousand would supplement the twenty-five thousand that I brought to you from contingencies, these were, again, unforeseen costs when the seventeen eighteen budget was put together, but that's what contingencies are for, and it is less than the fifteen percent that we typically are allowed to use contingencies for, so I'm recommending that we go ahead and do that, and if we don't do that, unfortunately, we're in a situation where we will not be in compliance with local budget law. So I appreciate, any questions you have?
Any questions?
I move the adoption of resolution eighteen seventy, a resolution approving an appropriation transfer for the year of seventeen eighteen, and directing the finance director to make the appropriate entries to the record and the appropriation transfer in the seventeen eighteen city budget documents and financial systems.
A second. It's been moved in second, is any discussion? Hearing done, roll call please, folks.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Yes.
Counselor Belts?
Yes.
Counselor Sharmer?
Yes.
Counselor Schenkel?
Yes.
All right, and that motion passes, that resolution passes, and now we're on to item number seven, which is to adopt a parking resolution, and that's a resolution providing for diagonal parking of motor vehicles on the east side of the one hundred block of Knox Street, and that would be resolution eighteen seventy-one.
Thank you, Mayor Milligan and members of council, what you have before you is a proposal that would increase on-street parking in the downtown core by an additional six parking spaces. I've received a couple of requests to consider the one hundred block of South Knox, we did a quick study out there, looked at the feasibility of it, and so what I'm bringing to you is a proposal to add diagonal park, basically change parallel parking along that east side to diagonal parking, and the net result would be an additional six parking spaces. So I'd be happy to, any questions if you have?
Question? Byron? How much is that going to reduce the room to drive up the downtown street?
I think the reduction is about six feet, that particular block, that one hundred stretch is, I think that's one of our widest streets in town, I don't know the exact asphalt width, but there's more than enough room to convert that side to diagonal and still have safe travel, two safe travel lanes.
And across the other side of the main, we already have done that, right?
Correct.
No major issues.
Correct.
On one side of the street?
One side.
This is one side.
And this is just one side as well?
Yeah.
Rock hand?
Is that a strike for bike lane currently?
No.
There is a handicap parking there, there's going to be one or two when you do the diagonal.
The resolution doesn't account for any handicap parking, the handicap parking is actually on the.
Other side of the street.
Yeah, adjacent to the financial.
You know, the question I had when I read this is, because I'm not a fan of, on streets like this, I'm not a fan of diagonal parking, because I think it's dangerous getting in and out, backing out, you know, blind back and all of that sort of thing. For six spaces, I don't know what the urgency is, and it's not like, you know, it's not like we're right in a hot area that demands a lot of turnover of parking. And I, you know, I look out that momma fitness window from time to time, and there's a lot of, there are few spaces available, and so I don't know.
Spaces in the parking lot or on the street?
No, no, on the street.
Okay.
So I'm working out when I'm there, right? I'm not BS. But, 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 you know, so I guess I don't know, I mean, I don't, I, you know, I don't know that we, six spaces, there may be a time when six space is a pretty valuable commodity, I just don't know that it is right now, with the, in my opinion, the added.
Sure, two points, you know, your first point about safety, yes, anytime you put in diagonal parking, you do, you do have a change, you know, an offset maybe in the safety of those backing out with traffic moving. We have a reoccurring need for additional parking in that downtown area. I will identify that, as was noted, I believe in Scott's report, that the business on the corner is, that's going to be a full business, a new business there that'll generate additional parking, and then up in the residential area, there is a proposal to put in some additional, an additional dwelling, I'll call it unit. additional dwelling, I'll call it unit, on that. So there would be additional demand for parking. When the Athletic Club is actually offering the courses which they do throughout the day, that area is entirely a hundred percent used. So if, if, I don't have a, I don't have a, you know, a strong need to do it. It was a request, we provided the evaluation, and I think it is, I think it's actually a valid request and would provide some benefit to the community.
And just an additional note, there's always different perspectives on parking, as we know, but one reason Monmouth hard worked is they said that they had customer problems. That's why they moved, because there was not enough spaces near their business.
And the other piece to that is that every additional parking space you can get is where an employee can park and a customer can park, because right now, some of the employees are using up what could be customer parking. So if we can add six, that's six employees that aren't taking up a current customer spot. It's not much, but it's movement in the right direction. Rock's in.
Have you ever considered back in diagonal parking reverse parking?
No.
I'll add one thing that says, sisters tried that, it's gone. It's totally taken out.
There are many communities that do.
It was nothing but accident, accident, accident. So, but I know that some of the businesses have asked for more parking, tied for what we're looking at, and I figure, if I'm looking at this, say, six doesn't make that, it will help some, doesn't make that.
That's twenty bucks a pop?
Yeah, and our crews are out painting right now. That's why this is before you tonight. And so if, if it's your decision to do that, then we can take care of that while we're doing it, and if not, no harm, no foul.
Russ, I assume you found out there in the world of motor vehicle transportation, the longest vehicle that exists, how many of long bed trucks, and, you know, what do you call that thing, where people can sit in the backseat?
Utilities man.
Would that, would that vehicle still be able to pull into this diagonal space without including traffic?
They will fit in the space. They do extend, you know, beyond the painted lines, you know, you'll see that occur in the diagonal parking that you have already established in different areas in town. So when you have an extended full-size pickup truck there, if they choose to park in one of those spaces, yes, they do extend outside of the painted lines.
Have you considered limiting the length of the vehicle to park there, like, say, no vehicles over fourteen feet, or?
We haven't considered it. It's additional signage, it's, you know, it's difficult to enforce, but we certainly...
I don't think people want to limit their vehicle length.
Last time I measured one of those, like, in the nineteen sixties, a seventeen feet long vehicle.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion? Your motion?
I move that Monmouth City Council adopt resolution eighteen seventy-one allowing for the installation of diagonal parking spaces on the east side of the one hundred block of Knox Street South.
Second. That's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, folks.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Belts.
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel.
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
No.
Counselor Sharmer.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
All right, and then the resolution passes. And now we're going to move on to item number eight, the police department review, and I've gotten a few people who signed up to speak on this, so we'll do our staff report, and then I can move into comments on that.
Thank you. Yes, this discusses an outside review of the police department, as we discussed at the last council meeting, and it was authorized, over twelve thousand dollars, to hire an outside agency. I did find the Organ Association of Chiefs of Police, they do these studies on a stock basis, so that would be a great outfit to go through. As I mentioned in the last meeting, I don't really feel a review is necessary. I'm unclear of the purpose. Right now, we have a well-mannered police department, populated with hard-working people, very high-quality services in our community. When you see these reviews typically, as have none of the staff reports, you've got a problem. You've got a highly visible, you know, bad incident, you know, mishandling of a case, misuse of funds, inadequate supervision, you know, complaints in the community. None of those are present in our situation, so I really just don't see the point of doing this at this time. I know that the intent stated was to look at the department, strengths and weaknesses, maybe have some improvements. The department's been very stressed by limited staffing, some other issues going on. They're on up slope right now. You've got the department pretty happy, morale's going up, and I'd be kind of sad to now kind of put a cloud over the department and put him under the microscope. Even if the study comes out with something good in the end, it's a stress to go through, and I don't think it's really viable at this point. With that, answer any questions?
So what, what services, what's the organization?
Yeah, Organ Association of Chiefs of Police.
Okay, so what, according to your understanding, what are they looking at?
They would do a top to bottom of the department, so it would be all policies, practices, you know, budgetary compliance with state laws, staffing, you know, how we're doing performance evaluations, pretty much everything.
So how does that, because I know when Chief Talon came in and did a presentation, we're talking a lot about, where's Chief Talon? Oh, there you are. We were talking a lot about the struggles and the, the issues that they were having, recruiting and keeping people, because we were having that issue last budget cycle, et cetera, et cetera. And so when we had that discussion, and unfortunately I wasn't here for the last council meeting, you know, we talked about, or at least I talked about, my desire to see a strategic plan to, and it's not necessarily looking at the department, its policies or whatever, but it's more of a strategic plan going forward, how are we going to address, address those recruiting and retention issues? So I don't know how this got knocked sideways into a review of, of department or individuals. I just, what, what I'm looking for specifically is, how are we going to face the staffing shortages? How are we going to recruit and find opportunities to perhaps find, you know, use different recruiting tools and different screening tools to find people that will stay here? So I guess I'm a bit confused as to how we ended up...
Okay, on that note, moving forward, that's just a challenge, and it's faced by every department in the country right now. I'm interested in one that the chief just forwarded to me, St. Helen's just dropped in a new policy. This is getting strategic. They'll actually give a twenty-five thousand dollar housing allowance for an officer if they'll stay five years. And that's really what's happening, what's happening all over the place, is raising pay, bonuses, incentive likes this, to stay, you know, in your community rather than commuting them from a different place. Daryl actually posted on the chief's list serve, what is out there strategic that you can move forward, and most all the responses came back was, "When you figure it out, let us know." So it's a tough one. I mean, we definitely can bring some options forward, you know, to provide some incentives, but that's, that's pretty much where you are. I mean, we, you recruit where you are, it's, it's the same market we're dealing with everybody else. Chief was saying he was just a graduation and was watching people sitting behind him scanning our recruit. That happens. Monmouth has a good reputation for officers and how they're trained, so people like to take us. And that's an unfortunate position we're in. But no, this study would be more focused on internal operations and practices.
Well, I'd make the goal, as I stated, for a few words, to find out, to bring in a different perspective, to look at this, to see how we can retain people, what we can do better, although we're talking between two people, I've been here for five years, and every year it's more money, more money, more money. Okay, what, what is our goal three years down the road? I mean, we need to, we just don't have the money. You already know the budget. You've already talked to us about the budget. So more money isn't going to be the answer all the time, so I'd like an outside opinion of how somebody else could put in, of how we can retain these people. Maybe somebody else has a better idea, maybe they don't. Maybe five people can put together a combination, with the chief, whatever's out there, so that we can retain these people, maybe better, and find out what we need for the next three to five years. I'm, I don't know, I, I would like to see how we can hold them without, we haven't had a full police force, like I said, for five years. I've been here. I think I've asked the chief that every year. Might have it this year, might not, we don't know, you know, might not. We don't know, might not be in here, fully staffed, that can go out by themselves. And so that's what I'm looking at. I just wanted, I hear the same thing every time, they're so smart that we're just gonna, they hire them all the way from, well, we've got Stateon, we've got Dallas, we've got Independence, they lose a person or two now and then, but not at the rate that we do. I'm just trying to find an answer so that we can get on to some, this police chief deal is what there is, that's what, you know, wouldn't hurt to have him bring in it, because you're talking people from probably fifteen different departments that are on this deal. You know, I mean, we can't compete with Portland, we can't compete with Hillsboro, we can't compete with Salem, but maybe we can figure something out that we can get closer, instead of just saying, "We need more money, we need more money." We don't have, that's what I'm looking at.
So I'm going to go through the people who have requested to speak at this, so at this time, the Monmouth Police Officers Association members wanted to come forward and present a statement. And there were some of you who had requested to make an individual statement, and Craig?
Good evening. I'm Craig Davis, and I worked for the City of Monmouth Police Department from nineteen seventy to two thousand and three. So I wasn't very good at math, but that's thirty-three years. And during that time, I worked for six different police chiefs, and none of them were any more prepared or able to lead than Daryl Talon. He was as good as there was, and there was a lot of good people. And, you know, when I first got the links, this guy that used to work here sent me the link, question mark, question mark, question mark, I thought it was a joke, I really did. Because, first of all, you have to have a problem to have a review, and I, you know, just like the city manager explained, the review is going to, it's not going to, they're not going to dwell on retention, I mean, that would be a factor. But I'll, I'll get into that, I'll tell you why there's no difficult redemption. But, you know, part of the thing is, people say that, that we're living in a Mayberry RFD and nothing happens here. That's not true. I always told people, the same thing happens in Monmouth, it's everywhere else, just not ways off, and if you don't believe me, go back to the archives, in nineteen eighty-nine, one of the most brutal murders in the last fifty years in the state of Oregon occurred three blocks from here, because I walked in on it and investigated it. My wife's sitting in the back of the room, you can ask her, she didn't see me more than ten hours for two weeks. So it happens here. And I don't know if you got your head buried in the sand, but look around, police officer gets shot every day, almost every day, and there's more than that officer-involved shooting. There's lots of them. You know when the last one was in London? Nineteen forty. And it's not because it couldn't happen, because everybody that's been an officer for ten years or more, I guarantee you, has been in a situation. I had two for sure, maybe three times where I could have used deadly force and nobody would have batted an eye. And there was an incident two or three years ago, the gentleman sitting in the back room with sunglasses behind his head, that made brilliant police work to save a life. He could have shot that person, nobody would have ever questioned it for a second. Why doesn't it happen? Because we have skills and training to take care of that. And there's, there's no better person to lead this department than Daryl Talon. I'd run through a ball for the guy. I don't always agree with him. We probably cancel each other's votes every election. And he usually beats me at golf and most of the time catches more fish than I do. But I'm telling you, I heard somebody say we can't compete with Salem or Portland. Yeah, you can. Look at that prototype in uniform, sitting in the back of the room. He could go anywhere in the state right now, get hired, just like that. And he's getting recruited. I guarantee he's getting recruited. I haven't talked to him for ten years, but I guarantee you that a lot of those guys sitting in the back of the room are getting recruited by other agencies. Part of the reason that you lose good people is because they're good. This department has a tremendous reputation, and people come after our police officers because they know they're good. You know, and for some officers, it's a career path, okay? My father was a football coach, and a good one, at least one person on this council could attest to that. When I was born, he was a, he just graduated from OCE nineteen fifty, excuse me, he was a middle school football coach. Then about every three or four years, we had to move because he moved up. He started out in middle school, ended up coaching a year, professional, didn't like to take back, but he coached at West Orange for years. But that was his career path. My career path was to be a sergeant. You know, I trained two people that became my boss, you know, that, because that was my career path. I didn't want to be the chief of police, you know, I wanted to be a sergeant. It took me fifteen years to get there. Why? Not because I, maybe some of it was my ability, but a lot of it was because there's no really chance for advancement here, because they don't wait. Sergeant Doran's been here for twenty-two years. You know, there, there may be a few people at the bottom that rotate through because they want to go somewhere else, because they know they're not going to get promoted for ten years, because there's no openings, because they're staying. You say they're leaving, they're staying. Look at how many people have stayed. Don't look at how many people have left. Look how many have been here for ten, fifteen, twenty years. And then I heard somebody say that some retired officer said it was a toxic situation in Monmouth. How do you come up with that? The last four people I know that retired from here, Rick Brandgerek, myself, Bob Blomroy, Tim Hines, every one of those people spent thirty-plus years right here, never worked anywhere else. If it was toxic, do you think people would stay here for thirty years? Not. So, you know, I'm just floored that you would even consider something like this. There's a lot better use for twelve thousand dollars than some frivolous, they're not going to be able to tell you anything except the same thing. There's people even because they want, you know, some of it's money, some of it's more activity, some of it's promotion, some of it is because there's not as many career, well, unfortunate officers like we were. Not as many thirty-year guys, you know, there, there's not as many. Some of them work seven, eight years and we want something else. But there are people in this department that could go to Portland, get hired tomorrow, so don't say you can't compete with Portland and Salem. They would hire any one of those, Salem would hire any one of those guys tomorrow, I'd bet you, if they want to do it. Some of them will go because they want more money, or they want more activity. But most of them, like Daryl Talon, are immersed in this community. Their kids went through school here, they coached them in Little League, they coached, you know, my kids went all the way through school there. They were born here, raised here, and I stayed because I love this town and the community. And we need somebody that's striving all the time to make it a better community, and Daryl Talon has done that for thirty years. Sorry, but I just don't understand how you can possibly come up with a decision to spend twelve thousand dollars. You want help with retention? Put that twelve thousand in their wages, give them a raise, that'll help with retention. That'll be part of it. That guy right there could go anywhere he wanted to get hired, in a heartbeat. Boom, so could he, so could he. You can compete with him, you're doing it, but some of them are going to leave, they're not all going to stay, but the ones that are immersed in this community and want to make it a better place to live, they'll be here. And look at the history. They've been here for years. Partly had, you know, there's going to be turnover at the bottom, two or three positions, and maybe one guy will say, "Hey, I could go here and be a sergeant quicker," but some of them are probably willing to wait. But some of them are probably willing to wait it out, or maybe they don't want to be a sergeant. You know, there, there's an officer out, how long have you been here? My table's full.
Eighteen.
How many?
Eighteen.
Eighteen here, are you a sergeant yet?
No.
Okay. There you have it. That's the night that saved somebody's life that he could've took like that, and he didn't. Because he had the heart and the training to do it right. All right, yeah.
Thanks.
Can I ask you a quick question? Is it possible that we could turn off the air conditioning and just wait on?
So, Craig has signed up. So, have we heard from the Monmouth Police Officers Association members yet? I'll make sure I get. Get back.
As you remember, I'm Kelly Carpenter, I'm one of your detectives at the, at the city here, and I'm also the president of the Monmouth Police Officer Association. So, we represent the nine police officers here at our police department, and we felt it was very important tonight that we come and face you and talk with you after hearing about the vote that took place last council meeting. And we have heard from the, from the newspaper and from comments mentioned at council that other people who have left our agency have been interviewed and talked to about our department. But yet, not a single person has come and talked to any of us, people who have worked here for years, who care about this community, who are best in this police department, loyal to this police department, loyal to this community. We are confused, we are stressed out, and we are trying to understand how we can work so hard, and our bosses can work so hard, our supervisors, our record staff, everybody else, and now all of a sudden, you want to spend twelve thousand dollars of our police budget to review our police department. It is unfathomable to us. We, it just feels at this time that this has gone on for months, this inquest or whatever it was, which, I'm not sure what it is, started months ago. And we thought, "All right, we are over it, we are going up." We have hired five new officers, amazing officers, officers that each one of you are gonna look at and be proud of, and know that they're gonna do a great job for this community, carefully selected, in the hopes that they're gonna stay here. But we all know that they're not all gonna stay here. It's just not possible. But, we can always hope. We feel like that things are looking up, and then all of a sudden, a vote is made to do a review of our police department. And then, an article comes out in the newspaper that identifies our police department as a toxic environment. That was disheartening to every single one of us. We care for each other, we are like family members, and I agree, at times we fight like brothers and sisters. But we care for each other, we have each other's backs, and we are loyal to each other, and take care of one another, and take care of our community. This, this has done nothing but caused more stress, and if, as all of you are aware, our job can be very stressful at times. And not only that, but the scrutiny that I have had and that the best of our officers have felt from other community members. So, I mean, think of how many people have read the IO since this last week it came out. I've had countless people come up to me and go, "Oh, what's the deal with that?" So, there's a lot of assumptions being made, and it is... I just, I can't say anymore about it. I'm gonna turn this over to Officer Reynolds. So, Officer Reynolds is Justin, he's our vice president. Does he want to say anything?
I don't have anything prepared, I think, I think we're all just ready for this to be done.
I just threw him under the bus.
Yeah, I think we're ready for it to be done. That's it.
We don't have a problem. We appreciate the concern and the thoughts, and the twelve thousand dollars, you know, it's frustrating. Right now, we're going through bargaining, we are, it's looking at budgets, and that money can be used for so many different things in our police department. And I just don't know, if you're being physically, physically responsible as council members, if that is really the best choice for how we spend our dollars. We really appreciate your time and you listening to us tonight. Anybody else want to say anything?
Yeah, and so, I mean, our previous speaker kind of, kind of mentioned it. I mean, I wish we had our, our police department diagram of our chain of command. You only have so much advancement opportunity in our department. We have two detective spots, we now have three sergeant spots and a lieutenant spot. We've got, you know, Lieutenant Haines, who just got promoted, I mean, he's a young guy. Sergeant Olson, he's a young guy. Sergeant Strack is a young guy. Sergeant Doran's been here for a long time, there's not a whole lot of room to advance. So, you have Detective Carpenter, you have Sergeant Strack, and you had Officer Robertson, who is now with the County Sheriff's Office. They all got hired around the same time. So, you have three people that are moving up in their careers, and they want to, eventually, five, six, seven years down the road, they want an opportunity to advance in their career. But we just don't have the positions for that to happen. Now, we have five new officers, all hired at the same time. They're all gonna advance in their career at the same time, they're gonna reach that point where, you know what, I want to become a sergeant, I want to become a detective. But we just, we don't physically have the positions at our department for something like that. So, yeah, they, there are gonna be people that are gonna go other places, because we just don't have that here, unfortunately. And that's just, that's just how it is. That's the, our department size, that's our city size, and so, and as you said, you aren't gonna have people from the bottom that, you know, just decide that maybe they just don't like the way, you know, they police here, you know, we're a small town, they want faster pace, they go somewhere else. But you're also gonna have the people that are gonna be here all at the same time, looking for advancement, that it's just not there. So, it's, it's not like some glaring issue that needs to be investigated. It's just, that's how our police department is. We've got a pretty good department here. I mean, as you can see, we're all here, our families are here, because we're, we're united. I mean, if you, if you're looking for a united department, or trying to find a problem, well, here you go. I mean, you've got a united police department. So, and if you guys have any more questions, I mean, we're all available, we're, we're at the police department twenty-four hours a day, so.
I have something else to add. I think this has been an immediate problem. It's been a short timeframe where we've lost all these officers, and I think stepping back and looking at the broader timeframe is probably important when trying to make a decision regarding this.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lieutenant?
I have prepared a statement, I'll read it so I stay on track and stay in the timeframe. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Isaiah Haines, and I'm a resident of Monmouth and member of the police department. I want to start by publicly saying that I support the Monmouth Police Department and all of its members from top to bottom. This last year has been the most trying and challenging of my thirteen-year career, learning how to navigate between working in a new position to, to both myself and the department, while having to hire, train, and staff five new officers and maintain the level of service our citizens and citizens expect to deserve. One thing, however, has remained constant, and that is a selfless work ethic and teamwork by members of the department to keep things going. This is the same reason that I have not left the Monmouth Police Department and chose Monmouth as the city where I raise my children and call my home. I have personal knowledge and relationships with both past and present members, and I know the culture. Have there been disagreements in occasional hard times? Yes, there has. Do these same things happen in, in workplaces or in life at all? I believe so. It is the same reason I'm standing before you here reading this letter. I disagree with your reasoning and decision. It is with, with this knowledge and experience that I question the desire to review the police department. It is not because I think there's anything to hide, because there is not. Review away. It is how we got to the point and the precedent we will set moving forward. I understand that you have spoken with former officers, but under what context? Did you also speak with the managers of this department? I know that city manager McClear was tasked with speaking with current members of this department and to provide you with his findings. Did you just not believe the findings? This is what it feels like in my position, that it will not stop until you get what you're looking for. When I read the newspaper and the headline said, "Monmouth to review police department", it was a kick in the stomach. I feel that regardless of the intent, these words have tarnished the department and its members. Those words alone cause people to doubt the department and our work. This seems reckless and unfair. It is my hope that when all is said and done, the council will support the findings and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Sergeant Doran?
Thank you again for your time. Thank you to Lieutenant Haines for working for me. I took vacation tonight so I could be here to speak to you. I normally would be working out on patrol. I am extremely upset with this council. The city manager has done a review at your request of our management and of our partner. At the last work session, you voted for another review. The press was at this meeting, they printed an article in the Itemizer Observer. This article discredits my chief, it discredits my lieutenant, my fellow sergeants, and my officers, and all of our staff. That was not fair to us. As Lieutenant Haines has said, you, that has tarnished our image to the public. We work very hard in the jobs that we do to earn the support and the respect of our citizens. We did not deserve to have a headline like that in our local paper. None of our staff did. Counselor Sharmer, during the work session, you said, and I quote, "There was practically a line of former officers outside my front door wanting to talk to me." I know these former officers, I still work with these former officers, and I've spoken with some of them. I know you reached out to them, they did not reach out to you, they did not line up at your door. You're quoted in the IO article stating, "One retired officer and five officers who have current, who are currently employed elsewhere, said Monmouth PD is a toxic environment." I do not believe that every past employee you spoke with, or even the majority of the employees you spoke with, made this statement. It is an extremely irresponsible statement for a counselor to make to the press. It discredits us, and it makes the difficult job that we already do that much more difficult. Counselor Johnson, you made this motion for this review, and you said during the work session, and I quote, "The only thing they keep asking for is more money to do the job, and we are not getting the results." What results are you looking for? What results are you not getting from our department? What results of the citizens of this city not getting from our department? It seems to me that certain members of this council have an agenda. I would like to remind you that you represent the citizens of this city and their agenda, not your own. I want you to know personally, I would welcome a review of our department, and I know all of us feel that way. There's nothing that we have to hide. We do the job that we are given to the best of our abilities, we proudly serve our citizens. It is not just a job to us. We miss time with family, we miss out on things that a normal person with a normal job gets to do with their families. I can't even begin to tell you the sacrifices that we have to make as officers for this city and the officers do all over this country. I've chosen to work here, I've chosen to raise my family here, I've chosen to stay here. I want you to know that I support Chief Talon, and I expect that you do too. I ask that you support Chief Talon. He is a good, honorable man. He did not deserve to have our agency discredited in the Itemizer Observer or by this council, by this vote. I support all of our staff, and I ask you to do the same. Thank you.
Chief Talon?
What a tough act to follow, huh? It's Mayor Milligan and members of the council. My name is Darryl Talon, I live in Monmouth, and I am the chief of police. It is an honor and a privilege to work for the city of Monmouth. I believe every citizen or every city of Monmouth employee in every department feels the same that I do. I feel very fortunate that I'm able to work with some of the most professional, dedicated, and compassionate police officers that you will ever find. They work hard every day to accomplish our mission, and that mission is to create a safe community and a feeling of security by providing the highest quality of professional law enforcement services to every single citizen. While following this mission, each officer exhibits our core values of commitment, respect, integrity, and service. I often hear people say, both inside and outside of our organization, that the employees who work at Monmouth PD are like family. I couldn't agree with them more. In fact, I tell all of our new employees when they come to work that this is one of the best things about working at Monmouth PD. Instantly, you're going to become part of our family. And I personally enjoy watching every day as our family works together as a team. We accomplish difficult tasks because we stick together. We work hard together, we laugh together, we cry together, and at times, we go through some rough roads together. And many times, we celebrate our accomplishments together, just like all families do. It takes a special person to work as a police officer in today's world. It is not an easy job. Officers go through a lot on a daily basis. They experience a lot of stress, a lot of emotion, a lot of anxiety. But as you've heard me say many times during the new police officer swearing-in ceremony right in this room, police officers have accepted the calling. That calling is to make sacrifices, put others before themselves, and to help those who are for whatever reason unable to help themselves. We do what we do without any expectations. We do it because we want to. And even after a bad day, we still get up the next day. We put on our uniform, and we do it again. We do it because we are sworn to protect and because our fundamental duty is to serve For the past sixteen years, while serving as a chief of police, I've had to make many decisions. Some of those decisions have been more difficult than others, but nevertheless, as the leader of this organization, I accept and I stand by those decisions, even if they are sometimes unpopular. You see, when I make a decision, I weigh all the factors. I seek advice and I listen to the input from all the others who have a stake. And I take in all that information that's given to me. But you know what the most important factor is that I always give the most weight to when I make that decision? That is, what is best for the citizens of Monmouth? What is best for the people who live, work, and visit, and go to school here? Because those are the people that we serve, and we want to give our best to them every As long as I've served here together, every member of the Monmouth PD has built trust and legitimacy within this community. We are a transparent organization. If you feel you need for someone to come in and review our organization, we completely are open to that, you heard that. Spending twelve thousand dollars, I'm not sure that that's appropriate. The public we serve is always welcome to visit our officers, you heard that from the officers, they want to talk to the public. People can sign up to, sign up to ride along with our officers, they can come in and tour our new police facility, or they can just come in and... and legitimacy within this community. We are a transparent organization. If you feel you need for someone to come in and review our organization, we completely are open to that. You heard that. Spending $12,000, I'm not sure that that's appropriate. The public we serve is always welcome to visit our officers. You heard that from the officers. They want to talk to the public. People can sign up to ride along with our officers. They can come in and tour our new police facility, or they can just come in and ask questions. Our door is always open, and we are easily accessible. We are very visible, and we participate in numerous community events throughout the year to build strong relationships with those that we serve. I have personally taken phone calls, and so do all of my officers, from people in this community during evening hours, on weekends, on their days off, even when we're on vacation. We take our phones, and we take those calls because we serve this community 24/7. I also check my emails, just like my officers do, on my days off and when I'm on vacation. I always want to be accessible, and I want to keep the lines of communication open with our community members. I'm here to listen and to serve this community. It's not an eight-to-five job, like some people have. It's a lifelong career. I've dedicated thirty years of service to the Monmouth Independence Community. It is the life that I and my family chose. We love being a part of this community, and I look forward to continuing to be, to provide the best protection and the highest quality of service to every citizen in Monmouth. Our Monmouth PD team is strong. We are united, and we are a family of dedicated professionals that this community can count on always. Always, we answer the call. We are ready to answer that call 24/7, 365. We are at this community's service. Thank you.
My name's Irene Talon, and I live here in Monmouth, and I'm going to read my statement. I'm concerned that I'll be emotional, or that I'll leave important things out that I thought I wanted to show you tonight. My main purpose for being here and addressing you this evening is not to talk about how wrong your recent decision was not to follow the longstanding city council policy on the issue of COVID increases for non-represented employees. That decision to not follow policy is not acceptable for city government. It sets a very dangerous precedent. My question to you is, what other policies and procedures and rules do you break going forward just because you want to? My main purpose here tonight is also not to defend the Monmouth Police Department. I don't need to. I and everyone else that live in Monmouth already know the Monmouth Police Department is made up of highly professional, dedicated, and caring police officers. Their integrity is above reproach, and I am proud to say my husband's a member of the Monmouth Police Department. The reason I'm here tonight is to remind all of you that your actions and words have consequences. They affect real people, and in this case, you need to see how you have affected my family. I have lived and worked in this community for thirty-five years. Darrell and I have four children. Their ages are thirty-three, thirty-one, twenty-six, and twenty-three. All four of our children were born and raised in Monmouth. They all attended preschool, grade school, junior high, and high school, all in this community. They have lifelong friends that live here also. This is our home. My husband and I chose to live and work here. Darrell could have worked for other police departments, but together, we chose to make Monmouth our home, and we chose to be an active part of this community and to make a difference here. As a family, we like this community, and we like what it has to offer. We have a lot of pride in our town and in our school system. I like going to Pymark and the Waremark and knowing that I'll see somebody I know. I like going to the post office and receiving help from the clerks, but no, I'm sending that package to my son who's deployed. We have a lot of good and helpful people in our community, and I like knowing that this is a safe place to live, that it's a safe place for children to play. It's a town where kids can walk home from school, or they can ride a bike to a friend's house. And our community is fortunate to not have to worry about a lot of crime. It's a nice feeling that you have that you can call the police for help, and they're going to treat you with kindness. Monmouth is a good place to call home and reach your family. But I want you to know and understand that that feeling doesn't just happen on its own. It takes a lot of hard work. It takes police officers who want to make a difference. It takes officers who care about where they live and work, and officers who put others first before themselves. That brings me back to why I'm here tonight. Some members of this council have not been supportive of the police department. I don't believe for one second these councils are speaking for any members of our community. The public actions taken and the harmful and damaging words the council members have spoken cannot be taken back. They have a direct effect on me and my family, and it's uncalled for. This is the first time in thirty-five years I have ever come to speak at a council meeting. I have always had confidence that the council will do the right thing and do its best to the city and its employees. We elect you, the citizens, to represent Monmouth and to act accordingly. I'm disappointed. I'm saddened, and I feel like this council's current actions and decisions do not represent me fairly.
Mayor and council, and many good friends. I just came to give a grandmother's perspective. I am a third generation of family that has given our entire life to this community, and I'm proud of it. One of your council members used to be my little neighbor boy. And I love this community, and I was so saddened to hear that we were kind of under attack. And I just had to come and say that I'm so proud to be a part of it. I was so proud to have the towns as our neighbors. I was so proud to always share with my friends, "Oh, we have the most wonderful police department. You just wouldn't believe. You make a call, and they respond, and they're kind." And, I mean, I'm talking generations of this thing happening. And it was just sad to hear that maybe now they are under attack. And I just had to come and share that even now, my grandchildren, I have six, that have made this community their home, and they all think of the police department as their best friends. They'll run up to a police officer, even when we're in town, and share something about something that happened at school, because the officers are in the schools. The officers are on the streets. The officers are making loving gestures to our children. Just recently, my granddaughter had to call 911. She's twelve. She was home alone. She was frightened. The police department reassured her. And I just can't tell you what that means to a grandmother, to know that the police department is not scolding or criticizing, but there to help. So I just would challenge you, if you ever questioned the efficiency of our Monmouth Police Department, you have to realize that every call my family has ever made has been met with timely response, kindness, and very courteous, even to my grandchildren. And I just think we should maybe check and be sure this money should be spent in this way.
I didn't prepare anything, but I'm Mark Music. I managed the Leswes store for the last twenty-five years here in Monmouth in Independence. I want to talk to you tonight in regards, it's not just the police department, but it's any business. It's hard to retain good employees, especially in a small town. Like I say, I've been here for, well, the last twenty years, I've lost twelve of my employees to police departments alone. Not just the Monmouth Independence Police Department, but Dallas, Salem. So I know what it's like. I train good people, and good people move on. It's a fact of life. I wish I could have retained some of those folks, but I didn't. So I guess I'm just here to let you know, from a business perspective, that people move on for different reasons. Pay, location, advancement, whatever it might be. But I don't think that we have a problem within the police department in Monmouth. I've known Darrell, again, for the last twenty-five years that I've been here. A very respected man in this community. Thank you.
So I want to thank all those of you who came and spoke on this matter. Now, we'll move back to our council conversation. Does anyone have any comments they'd like to make?
Somewhere, somehow, this got conflated. So I'm not exactly sure where along the lines this happened. But again, I know that the conversation that we were trying to have in that work session, and since I've been a counselor in a year and a half, I've spoken with Chief Talon a number of times, and the issue generally is, okay, how do we keep people? I'm having trouble. You know, we have all these external threats going on, and it causes, you know, causes turnover. We're losing people here and there. And so the question, I've never had that question, and the efficiency and the results of the department were never in question. It was always, how do we find people who want to stay? How do we find good people who want to stay? It was never a question of Chief Talon or anything like that. It's how do we be strategic? How do we think into the future? And another example we use was during the budgeting process, you know, when Chuck came up and said, hey, we're going to lose a lineman, you know, let's be strategic here and put somebody in the pipeline here so they can educate. And that's the spirit of where this began. So I, you know, I hear a lot of folks, you know, giving some very moving examples and things like that. But this review, I don't know how this turned into a, let's come up with a strategic plan, into a, let's review the department. So are we just talking past each other here? Or, you know, maybe we needed to find what a review actually is, because I had, you know, again, when we started this, it wasn't, it wasn't, let's go back in time and see who's doing their job and who's not doing their job. It's, how do we find good people and keep them? And somewhere, it seems to have gotten derailed into headlines and people getting offended and whatnot. And that was not, that was not my intention when I started this discussion. It's how do we make it better? They're good. How do we make it better?
So I'll interject, since I've been trying to moderate a lot of conversations over the last several meetings, is this, that you're on one track, and Royal and Laurel and now Roxanne are on a different track. So you guys need to have a conversation amongst yourselves as to why you're there.
But I need to interject, Ron, if I can. When I supported this, the reason I supported it is because I thought we were asked, help us come up with a retention and a hiring solution. And had I known honestly that it was going to turn into this, I never would have voted for this. This is not the intent. And I'm sorry to get emotional, but this was not the intent. We were trying to help. And I'm so sorry that it became this. And I think if we can step back and give back what you had suggested, let's look at this strategically, how can we move in that direction? So, thanks. I'm sorry.
And if I can just say something too, I, Roxanne's exactly right. This was never about the Monmouth Police Department.
That's not true.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let me rephrase that. It was never about the operations of the Monmouth Police Department. I had a neighbor who was in an automobile crash the other day, and she told me what happened. She said she, somebody called 911, and the Monmouth Police Department was there almost immediately. It was Sergeant Olafson, and she said he was so kind to her. He quickly helped her get her car up the roadway. Somehow, the people, Dairy Queen came out with tea for her, and the sergeant made sure she was okay in just the kindest, gentlest way.
You didn't say that in the paper.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I said you didn't say that in the paper.
Well, I didn't write the article.
We interviewed you. You wrote it in the article. You were quoted.
I need to keep some order here, so, no, I appreciate what you want, but let Laurel finish your statement.
And then he even drove her home afterwards. And those of us who talked to her said, this is the epitome of everything that's good about the Monmouth Police Department. We really appreciate the officers, how hard they work, putting their, literally putting their lives on the line every day. And I think we've, somehow, this has sort of turned into something that it was never intended to be. Chief Talon asked us in February to help him think outside the box, to find a solution for turnover at the Monmouth Police Department. And we're still trying to do that, trying to figure out why do good officers leave? Why are the, why are officers like Kim Dorn still here? We need to talk to you. I think it's important for all of you who are employees here to know and understand that the city charter prohibits us from talking to you. We can't do that. So if someone came to me and said, well, here was why I left, I couldn't go call you up and say, well, tell me why you stayed. So, because that's part of the charter. It's called prohibition of the city manager's job. It's the city manager's job to do that. So I don't want you to think, when you said, why didn't you talk to us, I didn't want you to think that we were ignoring you. We really, literally are not able to do that. Thank you.
So, Ron, go ahead.
I was just going to say that when, in our staff report, we have something from the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police, their agency review program, and as Scott was directed to come up with an idea on how this review might take place. And I read that, and I read it with care. And while I don't have details of the inner workings of our department, my sense is, is that our department, for most of this, would write the manual on how to do the business. I mean, that sort of seemed like my sense that they could conduct the review for others and not necessarily to be reviewed, though there's always, I suppose, room. So, you know, I would hope that, because, and one of the questions, one of the comments that came up is having to do with our concern about the turnover rate and so forth. One of the things that the council's worried about, not worried about, but concerned about, trying to find solutions to, is a full staff. We fund a full staff of police officers for a variety of reasons that Mark has alluded to in part, Craig talked about when he was here, Chuck and his, you know, grow-your-own-lineman sort of a thing. Makes sense. We're trying to find a solution so we can have a full police staff, if not twelve months out of the year, but pretty darn good. You're always going to have that turnover. So that was the genesis of what Byron suggested, that we were to develop a strategic plan on hiring and retention. And, you know, they're similar, but they're different. And that's, to my mind, that's what And that's, to my mind, that's what we need to continue with, to help the chief and the other leadership in the department to figure out, what are the things that we can do to make sure that we maintain a complete police force throughout the course of the year? That's what we intended, I believe, and that's, in my opinion, what we ought to get back to.
So, Royal?
And I made a motion for the, you have to have some money to do anything. My deal was, when I said at the last meeting, at the work session, you can listen back at the tapes, that I'm trying to figure out how we can help this so that we can have a full employment, and how we can look three to five years down the road, instead of every time we turn around, we're short, we need this, we need that. Then you look at my record, I've pretty much voted for about everything you guys have got, if you look at, for another policeman, I've helped on the, I wasn't here when they did the police station, where they just did the phones, or the computers, anything. Whenever you bring something that's very, very forward and very good, I haven't been against it at all. I was supporting exactly one more police officer, or two. We've put two on since I've been here. My deal was, I had to have some money, I had to figure out there, I don't care what you think about it, I just tried to bring somebody else in to give us a better idea how we can help retain. You put your ideas, he's put in, we're trying, we're trying to figure it out. Every budget, we're still trying to make sure we have a good police force, and we're still trying to keep it going. Thank you.
Now, I want to interject something here. This, the mayor is a longtime citizen for twenty years, having watched the police department from the first time that I was elected, and walking through the old police department and building is in orientation, having family members as police officers, and understanding my role as a counselor, and my role as a mayor, is that this council currently is overstepping its bounds. Our responsibility was to hire a city manager, we hired a city manager. The city manager's job was to hire a police chief. The city manager at that time hired Chief Talon to do his job. He's done it professionally. There's never been a complaint that I have ever heard of, of Chief Talon or our department, in the twenty years that I've been here in Monmouth. It's sickened me to see the direction that this council has gone in taking votes, in saying statements that are contradictory to what we're, what our responsibility is. This council, as a collective, several times has said, our responsibility is to the citizens. But yet, as the board of directors of this corporation, we are also tasked with being responsible to our employees.
Yes, absolutely.
And we have been irresponsible to our employees throughout this last budget section, throughout this request to do a review of the police department, with the other behavior that's happened from counselors about this police department. It's time this council understands what the hell its job is and does it right. We need to show a level of professionalism as counselors that we expect out of our employees. And right now, we have set a really bad tone as a council for how to be professional. And it's time that some people step up, however you need to find your way to do it, and apologize to the cities, to the employees of this city, to stop this issue that's in front of us. And then to turn around and change the COLA back to 3.6. Stand up, stand up for our employees. Some of you have taken this anti-tax thing way too far, and you're hurting people. You say you want retention of the employees, but you turn around and you slap them in the face. Create a lack of, that we have any moral support for them. It's like, kind of like, turn this around, let's be, let's be real with what we're supposed to be doing here. Get over your petty issues and look forward. This, this last week, I was, finally got to the point where I wrote the letter to whoever's gonna read it 151 years from now. And before I wrote it, I had the opportunity to read the letters from the fifth graders and the third graders of Monmouth Elementary. You know, it was, it was hard not to cry. Because one of the things that I wanted to tell the people, and I actually told the people who are gonna read it in 151 years, is that I hope that we as counselors now make the same decisions that the counselors and city government did in the past, that gave us the quality of life, the security. We're the 12th safest city in the state of Oregon, if you didn't read that lately. And that, and that they could have that because we were making the decisions like the former counselors had made to make the city of Monmouth what it is today. I hope that we as the council and future counselors will continue that, so that 151 years from now, somebody reads that and they have the same pride in Monmouth that we have today. We have the same pride in our employees that we have today. And we have the same pride in our school district and who we're raising and how we're raising them. Because if we keep doing like this council's done over the past few months, they won't be reading the letter in 151 years. They'll still be sitting in a box, left alone, because the park was abandoned. I don't want that to happen. And I think it's time that this council just sit down and have self-evaluation. Go home, tell them, why am I here? Who did I want to serve? Did I want to serve me, or did I want to serve Monmouth? Did I want to serve the employees? So, do you want to move forward with the, with this review? I'm ready for you guys to make a decision. Do I have a motion?
I, I still don't understand what review means. It seems that this, the tenor here, the tenor here has turned into this, this department review because of the suggestion that you brought, Paul. So, again, you know, the money, the $12,000, and coupled with the COLA issue there, the optics of this are terrible. The optics of this are absolutely terrible. And I can understand why people are upset, but it doesn't change the fact that this council was approached with a problem and instructed to think outside the box. So when we, when we're talking about review, again, I don't think, I'm not interested in a review that says where things in the department need to be fixed. It's, in the next ten years, how are we going to find and recruit people who stay here? It has nothing to do, little to nothing to do with the Chief Talon or the operations of the department. So when we say review, to, you know, I think we have to be careful about who we chide for wanting to think strategically and going into the future. So I think we need to define what it is exactly that we would be spending the $12,000 on. Because the $12,000 spent today to retain and, and keep even three or four people translates into tens of thousands of dollars into the future. So, you know, I am for the, I guess, a redefined review of what exactly that we're looking for, or what it is. And whether it's a dollar amount, whether Chief Talon or Scott come up with this plan, I don't care who comes up with this plan, but we were approached with a problem and we need to do something about it, somehow.
And that's, that's why I made the, yeah, you have some dollars to begin with, to make the motion. So maybe I should have said one dollar. You know, it was, the idea was, and I said that, and I explained what would be the best tactic to use when we, when I made this motion, and he said a review. My point is the same as yours, is I want to know how we can make this, stay this police department together, how we can keep it three years, five years down the road. That's what my goal is, and that's what I said at that work session, and I'll say it again. Stated no facts, no nothing. I just had to have a figure, so I put that out there. $12,000, maybe $50, maybe one dollar. Had to have something to start with, that's what I started with. And that's my point still, is we need to find out what we can do down the road and retain. Because we're losing money all the time on training people, we're losing money when they leave, we, you know, the first year or so, we don't get our money back out of them, it's just that continuous rotation. And we just have that.
So, so again, I want to interject something. The last two budget cycles, well, the budget cycle before this one, we improved some money for Chief Talon to get up to 14 sworn officers. He's working on that. To expect that to be done within a year, and we asked him to do that at the, at the end of June last year, so it didn't even, 12 months ago, we gave him the authority to do that. And here we are, while he's got five new people, we're already expecting that, we should know the long-term results of the decision we made a year ago. And that's irresponsible of this council.
That's incorrect. That's, that's just absolutely incorrect. We don't expect the results today. What we want are, how are we gonna solve the problems that have been identified by staff five, 10 years from now?
But how do we know that what chief has done this last year hasn't resolved that issue? We haven't given it time to grow.
Because he continues to come to us and saying, these are the external threats.
Oh, he didn't come to us.
Don't interrupt me.
They asked him to come.
Don't interrupt me.
That's incorrect.
They've come to us and said, do we not have these continual threats, these external threats?
Let it come up to the state.
Yeah. But I don't want to turn this into a debate, we're running low on time, but it's like...
Staff has not come to you, the council has asked staff to come to them. That's the correct statement. You continue to say that the staff is coming to you, that is not true. I take my direction from the city manager. The city manager has directed me to come to you at your request.
So when you came to us a few months ago, did you not ask us to think outside the box?
I absolutely did.
To address these external threats that you face.
I absolutely did. I asked the council to partner with me so that we could look at this and think outside the box, and come up with ways of which other cities, I've proposed to you, of what other cities do in order to try to retain police officers. By the way, I looked today on the list of the number of police agencies in Oregon that are looking for police officers. I didn't even count, I lost count, there are so many agencies in Oregon that are trying to hire. So this issue that you are talking about is not an issue, because it is a reality in every department within the state. Oregon State Police, if you read and keep up with what's happening there, they are less than 50% of what they used to be in terms of patrol troopers. They are going to have to go to the governor and the legislature, if you're watching what's happening, with a package to the legislature, asking for the hiring of, I can't even remember the number, but it's a high number, it's in the hundreds, to try to get back up because they're so low. Portland Police, not too long ago, was 40 officers down. Salem Police, not that long ago, was 20 officers down. This is a reality. You're sitting up here, talking and debating about something that's going to happen, it has happened, and it will continue to happen, you're trying to solve a problem. As the city manager mentioned earlier, when he said to you, this is normal. There are always openings in police agencies, almost all the time. And you think you can solve it. You can't. When I put the list serve out to all of the chiefs in the whole state of Oregon, I said, at your request, after I spoke to you, spoke to the council in February, your request was find out what others are doing. I put that out, and, as the city manager talked to you tonight and told you, the result of that request came back to me, and I got two answers. One was what he mentioned. When you figure it out, tell us, because we can't figure it out either. And number two, I got answers back saying, pay more. I tell you those things and you don't listen, and you don't believe me. I told Counselor Johnson three times, when he's asked me, why do people leave? And I explained it to him, just as all of the people today explain. The first person I got up here is a 33-year veteran of the Monmouth Police Department, and he told you, people leave, not just law enforcement jobs, people leave all kinds of jobs for various reasons. And you think you can solve that tonight? You're never gonna solve that. And if you follow what's happening, we are at the lowest unemployment rate that this country has seen since the 1960s. Okay? There's nobody out there, the hiring pool is minimal to none. That's number one. Number two, because there are so many openings in the state of Oregon, and even outside of the state of Oregon, for law enforcement positions, it's what I call an officer's market. The officers can pick and choose wherever they want to go. And when they do so, they are getting incentives. They are getting paid to move from one agency to another. They get incentive money, they, what used to be a disincentive for officers to move from one to another agency was the fact that they would lose their accruals. If they left one agency, all of their sick time, their comp time, their vacation time, all of that would go to zero when they started. And they also started at the bottom, at the new agency. Officers now in the state of Oregon can move from one agency to another, and they lateral in to somewhere in the middle, if not toward the top. They don't have to start at the bottom. When they come in at the middle or the top, they're getting paid more, and they're getting front-loaded benefits. They get sick time, comp time, and vacation time, all front-loaded the first day they walk into the door. If you had employees who were being recruited by another agency, and they were given those incentives, do you think they would continue to work for you? Or do you think they would look to go elsewhere? That's what's happening. So stop thinking that you can solve this problem today, or anytime in the near future. This is an issue that has happened from day one, from the beginning of time, and it will continue forward. The only thing that stops this, and I don't want this to happen, and I don't think any of you do either, is a tremendous recession. If the economy tanks tomorrow majorly, guess what happens? Not only do my employees stay put, but employees everywhere will stay put. No one will move, because if you choose to move to another agency, it's likely you're gonna end up being on the bottom. And when you end up on the bottom, you're the first person to be laid off. No one's gonna take that chance. But right now, just like everybody that wants to play the stock market and make a lot of money, there are, there are employees in many agencies that are willing to jump ship, make a lot of money, because they can do it. How many people are selling their homes right now? Many. Why? Because the market is so high. You're nodding your head, you're agreeing. People are selling their homes because they can make a lot of money right now doing that. Do they want to? Some of them don't even want to move, but they look at how much money they can make, and they do it. So you're trying to, you guys, it's just, I can't understand how you're trying to solve a problem that you can't solve. And I did not come to you with a problem. I've never said I've had a problem. Our department has a 1.4, we lose an officer, 1.4 officers per year, that's our average rate per year. If you put that up against any other agency, we're probably gonna be right at the average. Everybody loses people, to attrition, moving from one agency to the other, retirements, it happens all the time. I brought you those articles back in February, from Oregon and from the nation. If you would have read those articles, you would have seen, this is an issue happening all over the nation. No one in the nation has solved this problem. Other than, like I said, when the economy tanks, everybody will sit still, they'll all stay in the agency they're at, and we'll have a stable workforce for a while. Do we want that to happen? No. So we move forward, we're in a booming economy, people take advantage of what they can take advantage of, and in terms of work... People take advantage of what they can take advantage of and, and in terms of work and any other way that they can make money, selling their homes, whatever the case might be.
Excuse me. On his behalf, you go ahead and say, on his behalf, it's also incorrect. It's everywhere. I wanted to say that.
Thanks.
It is. So, sorry I took so long to explain all that, but those are the things that I explained in February, and when I got up after asking you if you would please support me thinking outside the box. What I meant by that was, look at what St. Helens did. St. Helens City Council came up with the chief of police, and they worked together, and they said, we are going to pay twenty-five thousand dollars to our police officers, our new officers who make probation. We are going to give them twenty-five thousand dollars to put down on a home so that they will live in our community, and they sign a paper saying, I will stay here for five years. Twenty-five thousand dollars for five years. After five years, they forgive that lien, that officer will stay, or they may end up deciding to go elsewhere. If they do and they sell their home, they don't have to pay that money back. That's what, that's when I said, think outside the box. The problem with that is, is there are certain counselors that if you talk about money, they immediately say, no. And the words that came out of a certain counselor the minute I was done with that presentation was, I don't support you and I don't support the police department. What am I to do when I bring something to the council with all of the facts and figures from the nation? And that's what I get. Instead of a council that says, look, tonight, I've heard a couple of people say, oh, no, we want to help you, we're going to work with you. That is not what, the mayor has it right. He has it right. He told all you guys, what you've done to me is you've looked at me and said, we don't believe you, we don't trust you, we don't think you're giving us the right information. You've also done that with the city manager. He tells you, just like he did in his staff report today, he said, there's no need for the review, I've already told you, everything's good, and I've already told you that they do the best they can, but retaining people is difficult in any profession. And you know what? You bypassed him like he didn't even talk to you. That's the frustrating part is, we want, when I say we, not just my department, we as a city, want counselors to listen. You're not listening, you're talking, and you're trying to come up with ways that you think you should do things when you're not listening, and you're not listening to staff. You don't listen to the city manager, you bypass him, and that, that hurts me every time I watch that happen. As the mayor said, he's, he is hired to do a job for you, and he does the best he can, he works as hard as he can, he's here all the time, the guy hardly ever takes a vacation because he's working all the time. He brings you everything you ask of him, and then the minute he's done talking, you just push him aside and say, okay, we need to do, we need to work on whatever it is we're working on. He just answered all your questions and you just bypassed him. And then we come to you and we have to tell you. It's unfortunate that this had to happen tonight, but the city employees, and it's not just my department, the city employees are just tired of not being listened to.
Yeah. I, I guess where I, and, and thank you for those comments, Chief. I, I guess where my concern is, I thought I was listening to you. And, and so I thought, come on. When, when you say, we want help, and like I said, I wasn't here, I wasn't here.
I didn't come for help. I said to you, you asked the, the city manager, the city manager came to me and said, please put a, a staff report together and give it to the council. I didn't come to you for help. I did what he told me to do.
We've had a number of conversations about this issue. You, you and I have. Okay? So I guess I'm, I'm confused as to when, you know, whatever words were used, were used, I guess I'm confused as to when, when funds are allocated to help, perhaps we haven't thought of everything, to help talk about this critical issue, why the resistance? The resistance for me?
I asked him. The resistance to me, for me?
To, to having, having somebody come in and saying, hey, this is it, let's, let's work through this strategic plan.
It's not a resistance. What Counselor Carey hit it right on the nose. He looked through what a review is, and it's not, that is, the review will not get to the bottom of what you are trying to, to get to the bottom of, of how to retain officers. That's not what the review will do.
And I agree 100%. I'm, I'm off this.
And if we had, and if we had a way, or a person, or someone that could help us with that retention piece, again, I will go back to, we've asked throughout the state of Oregon and we've looked throughout the nation. No one yet has an answer and no one has come up with anything. Some people have tried some things, as in St. Helens. So, again, going back to me saying, hey, let's think outside the box. Maybe we should start giving incentive pay to people to come to work here. Maybe we should start doing like they do. Maybe we should start helping them with getting a down payment on their first house. Maybe we should, you know, I, I gave you the whole list, I have my, my presentation there, of all the things that I have done over the last several years. I've looked at it and started doing many things. I've listened to my employees and they said, hey, if, maybe that this, if you give us this, or if you give us that, or if you help us with this, we'd be more likely to stay. And that's what I'm doing. But I can only do so much until, as Counselor Johnson says, you've got to put some money to it.
Right.
And he doesn't want to do that. Many of you apparently don't want to do that because you follow that lead and no one is willing to, to put any money toward any kind of a program, like many other agencies have done, in order to retain their people. You think you can do it some other way, and I'm not resisting of that. What I'm resisting is, is that you're chastising me and my department because you say you're blaming. I get the feeling that you're blaming me and you're blaming my department for what's happening. It is not my fault or the department's fault for what's happening. This is a systemic issue across this nation. That's what I'm trying to get at.
And I understand that, and, and this, this, this review, I, I'm not supportive of this review at all, and I thought, I, I think I made myself really clear, that is not how, that is not how this whole discussion got started. It morphed into this somehow. But, but again, my desire is to, is to think forward. How, how are, how are we doing that?
And so is mine.
And, right, and, but we have different ideas, and you have some ideas, and I think we can come together and talk to, talk about those ideas.
I tried that, but my ideas were, that would.
Well, we got to keep talking, because, because we got to do something, right? Then we got to keep talking.
We're the open side, the closed side was, was sitting up there.
Right. So, so what I need to do is, I need to bring this back.
Thank you for letting me come back up.
Um, we're, we're at our, technically, we're at our time limit, but we still have some, a couple of critical things we need to get done tonight before we go.
Couple things on this one, if, if possible. Um, it, it sounds like you don't want to move forward with the review, so if I could have a direction not to that, that would be appreciated. At a basic level, I, I agree with what Daryl's saying, there's not a solution. We can sure scan, and, and like Daryl just said, come back with ideas, we can do that, but there is not a magic solution. I think I look at another one right now is affordable housing in the state, and it posed a question, there's affordable housing issues everywhere, and then when you ask anybody, how do you fix it? No one has an answer because there isn't an answer. A lot of things we deal with, there just isn't an answer. If you ask me to recruit Nike to Monmouth, I will probably tell you that can't happen. There's lots of things that just, there always isn't an answer. If you could, if you could close this item out, um, I need to talk to my staff about the couple of agenda items, if a possibility, we need to obviously adjust the agenda, potentially cancel the rest of the night, but I need to, if you can give me a couple of minutes to talk to staff, that would, but, but we do need to put to rest the review, what you want to do here.
Well, from our, one of our alternatives provided in the staff was, was to not proceed with the department review, so I'm going to move that, that we do not proceed with the department review until such time as we've got a clearer image of what that might look like.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to not proceed with the department review. Um, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of not proceeding with the department review, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same thing? Right, that review is shelved. At this point.
Could you give me like two minutes?
Sure, we'll do a real quick recess for you to talk to.
Take a five-minute recess, I'll deal the story through. We have to do the rest of the agenda.
Okay. Want to bring, to me in the meeting, just to throw real quick, um, due to the late hour, we're going to, um, move the work session to, uh, to a later date, and we're also going to postpone the executive session for tonight. Any of you who were here for a work session, comments? I appreciate your hanging up, and I apologize for the late hour, but we're going to move forward, so at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I, I have one to comment that, that I'd just like to throw out, and whether there's any opportunity for this or not, I don't know. When I read the minutes, um, I, I was, regarding the, the motion on the adoption of the compensation plan for the non-represented employees, I read through the, the text of that and discovered that, that Counselor Johnson made a motion and Counselor Silvernagle seconded, subsequent conversation went on, and, um, uh, after that, Counselor Johnson makes a, a move to amend that without accepting anything from the second, and Counselor Sharmar, uh, did second, and then there was a vote and it passed, uh, three votes to, to one to reduce that down. I thought we had a procedural problem, I thought that motion should have been ruled out of order, uh, but after talking with counsel, which is Lane, um, he assures me that, that that was, that was fine.
Procedurally.
Procedurally, that, that was fine. My thought was, is that when we're changing council policy, uh, because again, was another narrative, we had a policy of following a particular index for twelve years, and so if we're going to change that policy, we're going to reject the recommendation of the budget committee in a situation that would create a fiscal impact on valuable members of our, of our workforce, um, I, I thought I ought, we ought to do that. We don't have, um, you know, procedurally, there is nothing there. There is an opportunity, and I just throw this out there, uh, there is a window of reconsider, reconsideration that can be, and, and it's limited to, uh, the next meeting, the next meeting of this body, and, uh, in order to move for reconsideration, uh, you had to vote on the prevailing side. So, um, I guess I would just throw out any opportunity with no, with no arm twisting or anything else, um, is anyone interested in reconsidering that, that voted in the affirmative, in reconsidering that, uh, move to, to reduce the, uh, the COLA for our non reps? I'm not going to mention it again, this is not, this, it's just a thought, and we'd have to go through a procedure to, to decide whether we want to pass it. It would only be a matter of reconsideration. So I'm going to throw that out there, Mr. Mayor, and I don't want any pregnant pause, but if anybody's compelled, uh, I would, I would be happy to, uh, second any motion for reconsideration.
I move that we reconsider.
I'll second. So it's been moved and seconded to reconsider.
The vote by which you established the COLA at two-point-five percent.
Correct.
Okay.
Because we don't have that before us, that, a, a, any kind of a, of a resolution, which I think is required on this, I would recommend that we put that on the agenda for our next meeting. So.
So we can have full discussion.
So then.
You, you could off, you could off, you could take the vote tonight and then, just like when you approve a, uh, you know, a decision to have an ordinance prepared or a resolution prepared, you could take the vote tonight and directly the resolution be brought back to the next meeting.
Yeah, so the, so the motion to reconsider doesn't, doesn't, well, it.
Basically reinstates, it reinstates the, it, 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 it sort of takes you back to the proposal, which was three-point-six.
Right, but it doesn't solidify the three-point-six until a motion is made at the next council meeting. So, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I voted for keeping the three-point-six, and if I was here, I would have voted for, for keeping the three-point-six, but I guess what's changed? I mean, to, to, I mean, what's changed since then?
For, for me, to be honest, what's changed is that in hindsight, I realized we had four counselors that night, and there was discussion, but I feel now, honestly, because we're being given the opportunity to think this through again, Counselor Carey, you were not given an opportunity to discuss this, even though we did discuss it at budget, however, there was a lot of lively discussion at budget and we never did come to an even decision. It just seems the fair thing to do. I mean, we've been asked to think about the community and think about, take their input, and I hear their input pretty clearly, but it just feels like the right thing to do.
And, um, for those of you who weren't here, I, I was suggesting that we give a three-point-six percent cost of living adjustment to the employees who are making under a hundred thousand dollars a year, and a two percent adjustment for those making over a hundred thousand dollars a year. The dollar amount still would have been more for the people making over a hundred thousand dollars a year, um, but I guess there, according to counsel, there's no way that we could do that without a study and to reconsider. Or what was, what was, tell me again, what was the issue?
I don't, I don't think I said you couldn't, I just said it wasn't going to be advisable to.
Wouldn't be advisable.
Create a, a, and then my, my, I remember now, my concern was that you would say that in terms of gender.
Well, that was a separate.
And that if we were going to try and ameliorate some gender discrimination, I thought you needed a study to establish that there was in fact bona fide gender discrimination before you, and, and that was, that was why I was uncomfortable with you approving, uh, a bifurcation of the COLA based on pay, when in fact the discussion was that that was really a surrogate for gender, uh, and that I was uncomfortable with you making a gender-based kind of determination on the fly.
And because we're going to be looking at a new, uh, COLA process, I, you know, that's, there's some real validity to that, but I think that could be part of that as we look at, you know, what we're going to, to change to subsequent. Uh, I don't see that fitting into this particular budget, so.
So any more discussion? And, so should this be a roll call vote on this?
Doesn't have to be.
Okay, so all those in favor of reconsidering the motion, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
So noted. Um, and so that motion passes, so we'll bring it forward.
What I might suggest is that everybody table further consideration of this until the July meeting, and then we'll have a resolution before you at that time.
Yeah, and I think just, just to make it easier choices, I think we'll, we'll bring back, we'll have the three-point-six and we'll have the two-point-five, and the easy one, these resolutions is you can pick any number in there, just stretch it out and you draw it in.
Okay.
It's not that hard.
All right.
You can make an adjustment if you need to.
Okay, so do you?
I think you're appropriate of motion, it's technically the reconsideration puts the main motion back on the table.
Okay, so would you like to?
Um, well, um, you know, I would, um, I'll need a little help.
You just, I would say move to table consideration of the COLA until the July sixteen.
Okay, so I will move that we, uh, table any discussion of the COLA for non-represented employees for the, uh, two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget until, uh, the July seventeen meeting.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so, because it's part of our agenda, real quick, are there any counselor comments at this point? Hearing none, uh, I'll entertain, again, a motion to adjourn. It's been moved, all those in favor, see if I can say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned, and I'm thanking you for your service.